It's now time to call order. The Southern University Board of Supervisors Academic Affairs Committee Meeting. Before we do that, I want to say welcome to Southern University Board Meeting and thank you for being here. And I pray that everybody's being safe in this unusual heat wave we're going through. So with that being said, I'm going to ask that the head of the Academic Affairs Committee, which is Dr. Leon Tarver II, call his committee to order. Dr. Tarver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, may we have a roll call?
Absolutely. Dr. Leon Tarver II, Mr. Sam Gilliam, Attorney Jody Amade, Mrs. Maple Gaines, Mrs. Ann Smith, Dr. Orlando Williams, Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
Next item on the agenda, I think Dr. Tarver will take it in the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have, have we had an adoption of the agenda? We have a motion to do so? You can properly move second. And second, that we adopt the agenda. All of those in favor, let them sign a by. Those opposed, ayes have it. Item six on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments at this time?
I think we missed Mr. President, Mr. Chair.
Missed who?
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the stage Ms. Ariel Leatherwood. Ariel is a proud 12th grade student at the Southern University Laboratory School, where she has been for the past four years. Her proud parents are Lenell Leatherwood and Benito Leatherwood Garrett. Her father is a proud graduate of the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. Ariel has served as Miss Junior on the Centennial Court for the 2223 school year. During her time here at Southern University Laboratory School, she has an active member of the Youth and Government Club, Senior Beta Girls Track Team, Girls Volleyball Team, and Girls Basketball Team. She was a part of the team that earned a state championship title in the 2122 school year and the district champs this past school season. Ariel attends House of Restoration Outreach Ministries in New Rose, Louisiana, and is active in the youth ministry. She is on the honors path here at the Laboratory School and takes dual enrollment courses at Southern University and M College, where she has maintained a 4.0 GPA. Ariel plans to attend Tulane University and major in nursing with the goal to one day become a nurse practitioner. Her awesome personality.
Tizer.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got anything?
All right. We now go to item 3B, Special Recognition of President Harry Williams, the CEO of the Thurgood Marshall College Fund. We'd like to invite President Williams to the platform, the podium.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. I am honored to be here with you today on behalf of our founder, Dr. N. Joyce Payne. We are honored to be a part of your meeting today. I'm here in Baton Rouge at the request of Chancellor John Pierre. My son just completed his second year, first year of law school here at Southern, and we. I said, I don't want to bring a suit today, but he said, put a pack of suit and come on over because we want you to speak before this board today. And I said, yes, sir, I will do it. And I'm honored because we get up every single day representing 47 publicly supported historically black colleges and HBCCs that we represent and more to close to 300,000 students. And we've been able to raise close to a half a billion dollars in honoring Justice Thurgood Marshall, a man who dedicated his life to social justice, social equality, and creating an opportunity to change the world. And so the students that we lift up here at Southern, they're part of that legacy. And so when I get up and go around the country and meeting with our students and meeting with our leadership, I get excited and I get excited about this opportunity here that we are, that's been bestowed upon me. I am proud of the fact that we've been working with the Southern Foundation, the Descendants and Reconciliation Committee. They have agreed to allow the Thurgood Marshall College Fund to serve as the organization that will provide scholarships to those descendants. Dr. Joseph Stewart, who is a proud Southern graduate, is also someone that we have worked very closely with. I am, I'm excited about being here today because my very first visit to this campus was in 2001. I believe President Tolliver was the president of this university. I met with Chancellor Ed Jackson. And we talked about how we were going to work together in a way that would increase enrollment because at that time, the state was going through some what they call minimum admissions requirements, where they would change all the requirements and we were trying to figure out a way how to, to support. And I was currently at North Carolina A&amp;T at the time. And, and when I made that visit, I had no idea that 22 years later that I would be back here and my son would be in law school here. So, you know, God has a way of bringing you back home. So I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to be with you today and I look forward to continue to work with President Shields and all the other chancellors as part of this great system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda. 3C Artificial Intelligence. I'd like to ask Chancellor Pierre, you give me the presentation, please, of the IBM personnel here?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Dr. Tarver, members of the committee and members of this board. Today, I have the unique honor of having a presentation done on a project that we were really encouraged to encounter by Dr. Derek Warren. And after speaking to Chairman Lawson and President Shields, I said, let us be the test case pilot for this particular project, which I think can be a transformational project, hopefully for not only Southern University Law Center and the rest of the system. I'll ask Dr. Warren, who has had a long career prior to coming here with IBM, to introduce the members of the IBM team.
Thank you, Chancellor Pierre. Good morning to my Southern University family. Chairman Lawson, Vice Chairman Witchfield, President Chancellor Shields, to the distinguished and honorable members of the Southern University Board of Supervisors. Again, to my Southern University family, to my Dean Donald Andrews. It is an extreme honor and privilege to share some of the innovative work that is being done and going to continue being done at the Southern University. As a Southern University trained computer scientist, I was taught by giants and I was always encouraged to problem solve, to use my curiosity to create and to make our lives better. And so without further ado, I'm going to ask my IBM colleagues Alexis, Rick, and Spark to come up and show you some, some of that innovativeness that actually was sparked by Chairman Lawson. He called and said, can we use AI to help solve some of our problems? And then Chancellor Pierre said, listen, let me be first. And so without further ado, I'm going to ask the IBM team to please come forward and share some of this solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Alexis Coons and I am your IBM AI Applications Representative. I just first wanted to stay, start by saying thank you for having us here today. It's been a pleasure touring your beautiful campus over the last day and it's a pleasure being here. So we are here today to show you how Southern University can adopt AI to make an immediate beneficial impact to your students, students, guardians, and staff. Imagine today, you're 20 years old applying to Southern University. You go online to apply but cannot locate what is needed to do so. As a Gen Z applicant who does everything online, you try calling the phone number listed on the website, but it's 10:00 PM and no one answers. You end up frustrated and unable to complete your application. We learned from members within Southern University system that this is a consistent problem in students not being able to get their questions answered. What we are going to show you today will fix this problem. It is called IBM Watson Assistant. Watson Assistant is a market-leading conversational AI platform designed to help your students get the answers to their questions immediately at any time of the day with just a few clicks, leaving your university staff with the additional time needed to answer those more complex questions. For reference, we implemented the same AI solution at Rockhurst University and at Purdue's School of Management, and the AI assistant became Purdue's second highest generator of new applications. And they saw that 53% who engaged with the AI assistant before applying were eventually accepted into the school. Additionally, Rockhurst AI assistant has saved the university over 260 employee hours a month. And 60% of their prospects who reached the admissions page proactively engaged with their virtual assistant for this help. Over the past few weeks, we've had the pleasure of working with the wonderful Law Center to develop a custom solution for their website based off the feedback we heard from the different department heads within the Law Center on questions they are being asked most by their students. A huge thank you to Chancellor Pierre for working with us on this. Now, we understand you have a current admissions chatbot. Today, what we will show you, shortly here, will show you how your old chatbot is very different than the AI assistant. IBM Watson Assistant is made strictly for enterprises. What that means is that it brings that extra security and control, guaranteeing that your students are receiving the correct information from their questions ethically. Unlike something called ChatGPT, which I know is labeled on the agenda for today's session, and although similar in utilizing AI technology and large language models, ChatGPT was made for anyone and everyone and pulls answers from unreliable and untraceable locations. IBM Watson Assistant has a backend component that can be controlled by the operational level at each department in which they will have access. level at each department in which they will have access to review every question that was asked, what the AI responded with. And if they don't like how the AI responded, they can simply go in, edit how it responded, and in turn, the model learns from that edit. This does not need to be managed by IT. This is a no code, no hardware required solution. It is extremely easy to manage and maintain within the different departments of Southern University as each department has the knowledge base to do so. This will also allow your departments to improve the data that is on your website and system by providing analytics on topics that need more information. If you choose to move forward with this solution, we have the flexibility to start very small or as large as you would like. We can start with one school, one department, like we've started with the Law Center here, and grow it from there, or alternatively, we can implement it schoolwide. Now, this solution is best shown, not spoken about. So we have Spark here, who is our engineer, who created the solution for the Law Center. We're excited to show it to you here, so I'll hand it over to him.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for your time to meet with us today. As you can tell, we're very excited to showcase our Watson AI assistants and how we can make improvements at SCLC. So first off, just want to recap with what Alexis said. I just want to expand just a little bit. In addition to just answering questions, what we allow the assistant to do is put guardrails around the data so just in case, and we'll see in just a few moments, if questions there were asked, the information does not reside on the website or the data you feed it, we tell them we just don't have it or we can provide alternate solutions. So as you will see in just a few moments, our goal here really is to empower an AI assistant with the wealth of knowledge that's currently on SCLC's EDU website. So it's different webpages, different links that scatter across everywhere. Oftentimes, a lot of students may come to the website looking for information, but sometimes you have to get the right combination of clicks and different sections of the webpage to find what you're looking for. Now, just to see it in action, I know we've all been waiting for just a little bit. What I have up here on the left-hand side, and let me zoom in just a little bit. On the left-hand side is our current admission spot for SCLC. And on the right-hand side, we have our Watson AI assistant. It's just on a mock SCLC webpage. So I'm going to take you through a quick, I guess. Sorry about that. Thank you. So I'm going to take you on a quick user story journey as to what they may experience from beginning to end. So let's say I'm the twenty-year-old or just anyone interested in SCLC. They've heard great things about the programs and the campus. So they go to the SCLC websites and naturally, because they're interested, they ask, you know, what is the application process? So. Assistant took the question, took a moment to search the website, and also responded just like a natural, just like just like a human would. So as we see here, and this information is somewhere on your websites, it may look at multiple websites and passages to form this answer, but we can see step-by-step instructions as well as some additional links that they might be interested in, some cost, dates. And if they want to, they can click on here for more information. Now, naturally, after finding about the application process, they want to know how much does it cost? So let's say we have John, who's a who wants to go to school part-time, but is not a resident, so he's from outside of Louisiana. So again, what we're doing. Going through the different sections to find out if there's anything, any information about this. And it looks like for right now, I think we're having a bit of issues here. I'm sorry, I think I my internet session got disconnected earlier. So what will happen is, again, it's going to search the website and look through the different parts of pages and passages that has this information. And once it does find the information, it's going to come back with an answer that pertains to this question. So we can see that the total cost of attendance for a part-time, non-resident student is this amount and also includes certain components to it. And again, if they like, they can click on here for more information. And let's say the parent, let's say John's parent, Spanish-speaking, and they were they were talking to John about some JD MBA dual programs and they're Spanish, most most fluent in Spanish, so they just went to a chatbot and asked a question without much thinking and thinking they would just understand. So what we're able to do is take this Spanish question and we translate it, again, searching through the website and same process, but this time we're responding in Spanish. And it's not just limited to Spanish, I use Spanish for this example, but it's compatible with pretty much any language that's translatable today. And throughout the throughout the school year, a student may be curious about how many more credits they need to graduate. So imagine if we were integrated with our with your backend system, with the student profiles and databases, what we can do is immediately pull up, hey, it's Alexis, and it seems like you need three more credits to graduate. So we can provide them a path and suggest some courses that are still available. So we can ask some questions like, you want in-person, which like virtual? And as we go through these questions, we can also ask if there's a preference for the course designations. If they don't have a preference, then they'll take all the preferences, take into account the student profile, and provide some courses that are available. And if they like, they could say they want to register a course for one of these courses. And after that, we'd be able to register a course for the students. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, if we simply don't have the information on the question that's being asked for this question, let's say it's summer break is coming up and someone is a student is looking for a part-time job. I searched the website for part-time jobs, I didn't find any information. So what we're expecting here is guiding the student some additional paths. So we'll see that it didn't find any information, so we could, the student could either create a ticket or they could speak to an agent. And we could set this up where, you know, only the speak to an agent button shows up during the hours of the agents, maybe eight to five. We could have both, it's your preference. And let's say the student wants to create a ticket. What we can do is also bring in the context of the question that was asked or the question that was asked and simply enter the question, sorry, enter the email address where the agents can follow up. That about sums it up for demo. I would love to take any questions or expand on anything I covered so far.
Just had a comment. I was just going to just suggest the board or tell the board, I'm actually in the process of writing a children's book and had some writer's block and use ChatGPT to. I actually put the text that I had in, highlighted the sections where I had the writer's block, and it dang near wrote the book format like I should have just called JTP from the start, but it has been helpful. Myron and I was talking, he uses for letter writing, so this would be a very useful tool, not just for finding out what's going on in curriculums and things on campus, but to help the students navigate some other terrain as well. So awesome presentation, thank you so much.
Mr. Rutledge?
Good morning. Thank you for your presentation. I'm actually fascinated by this and have done a lot of reading to try to educate myself on it, and I do use ChatGPT on occasion. My question regarding this particular presentation that you made. In my reading, what I've discovered is that the some of it is still in beta, but it's heavily reliant on the accuracy of the information that's in the database from which it pulls the information. My question is for, say, for the Law Center or for SUNO or for some of our other campuses, do you front-load and build a database of basically frequently asked questions? Or does the does the programming pull from the existing websites? That's number one. And number two, because I did see it, it was standard reasoning that when you went prime time, the the thing said it was stumped a bit. What kind of QA process do you have embedded in in this to make certain that this information that's being communicated to prospective students is accurate?
Thank you for the questions. So regarding the first question around the data that it has access to, so as of right now, I may have mentioned it earlier, what we've done is just scraped most of the webs, most of the webpages on on sclc.edu. So different links, different sections, and that's the only data we're giving it. So let's say, you know, unlike ChatGPT, if, as we saw here, if we ask a question where the data does not have the information, we're not going to give it a false answer that sounds right and sounds smart. So we can put guardrails around that, and there's many ways to configure that, such as confidence scores, semantic scoring, there's many ways to guardrail that. And the second question, I'm sorry, could you just touch on a little bit more on that?
What kind of quality assurance are you going to have to ensure that the information that's being provided to folks is accurate?
Yeah, absolutely. So as of right now, this is just a developer environment, but once we, if we do move to decide to move forward, we'll have our developer teams and our data analysts and data scientists just analyze all the data, make sure that, you know, we're testing all these questions, making sure the confidence is looking right, the information we're giving is correct. And there's also, as I mentioned earlier, there's many ways to configure it. We can drag and drop confidence scores as to if the confidence is below twenty percent, then show them, create a ticket, speak to an agent, below ten percent, et cetera. So it's highly dependent on how you want to set it up, but we have processes around that as well.
Please go.
In addition to this, this, this technology, this this particular aspect of it, in your practice, can you share maybe an example or two, and this is for any of you, in your in your experience with other higher-ed institutions, some of the things that they may be doing to take advantage of this AI technology over and above this that perhaps if it's not, it should be on our radar?
Yes, so. Oh, sorry. Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rick Weaver, part of the team that built this demonstration. And I like to use the term drinking your own champagne as well. And so I've got one use case that we talk about quite a bit with an IBM for our HR system. So as an employee, as a manager, we're actually using the same technology and AI assistant that has really streamlined how we do a lot of the things, either from a management point of view or an employee point of view. I will say over the last year, probably the projects that my team done is probably sixty to seventy percent just focused in this area. We've seen it, you know, client-facing, student-facing, internal processes and things of that nature. And so this is probably the thing that's keeping us the busiest over the last year or so.
As I mentioned earlier, we did implement this at Purdue's School of Management and Rockhurst University, and they saw a one in five students that came to their page to apply interacted with the chatbot. And then eventually fifty-two percent of those that did interact with the chatbot were accepted into the school. So there was a high, you know, interaction rate there as soon as we implemented it, and now they're taking it across their entire school platform.
Any other further questions? Mr. Gilliam?
I think I'm on. You may have already answered it with your response just now, but these questions appear to have been Law Center-specific.
Yes.
Is are we already adapted to, say, the university, this landmass as a whole? Do we envision carrying this to Shreveport and New Orleans already, do you?
Very good question. Thank you for that. This proof of concept was focused with the School of Law here. The design ultimately is you can take this enterprise-wide. I like to talk about adoption in terms of like a crawl, walk, run kind of approach. And the crawl phase is just proving the technology, seeing the value. As you saw with the demonstration, it was focused on public information available on the website from a law school point of view. But as we move into the walk and the run phase, typically we see things like expanding against other campuses, other departments. You saw that this was primarily focused on textual input. We have some clients that start to add voice, so not only text but also voice. We have some clients that actually have gone through and actually added an avatar. So you're actually talking with an avatar and the responses from the AI assistant is like you're talking to a person. So lots of different ways to kind of move from the crawl, walk, run phase, but it's very common to get, prove it out, and then expand that across other campuses or departments.
Can't hear you. Can you finish? Are there any other other questions?
And if I may add just one quick point, the the thought around this is that it's machine learning. So as questions are asked, we are able to correct it. So if there are errors on the website, the thought is that we will be able to correct those errors so that the answer the next time is better. And this is a scalable solution that can touch every facet of the Southern University system, whether that's HR, whether that's the College of Business, whether that's ag, whether that's questions to the Board of Supervisors, there can be an AI assistant that is designed to interact, respond, so that there's no more quote-unquote calls not being answered. The intent is to make our lives easier, to improve our student as well as our Southern University stakeholder experience. And again, it's machine learning at its best and at its finest.
Any other further questions? Dr. Warren, you want to close?
Well, I'll just say thank you again for this opportunity. As an IBM alumnus and as a computer scientist, we can use technology to make our lives better. And I'm excited about the fact, and I want to see Southern University as the first HBCU that implements an AI solution because we are innovators here at Southern. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Morning again. I wanted to say thank you. We have been communicating about this on a couple of calls, and I'm excited about opportunities. And what Dr. Warren just alluded to is exactly what I would like to see. This as the model for the HBCUs, certainly PWIs as well, and I think we're going to do that. And the intent here is to make sure no call is not immediately unanswered, right? And that folk get comfortable with this technology. So I do realize, Dr. Merrick, that we're going to have to invest in our communications side of it. We want to get on the front end of it. High school students ought to be touched and geared towards when they search for college opportunities, Southern University automatically appears in their search. And there's ways to do that. I guess that's the business I'm in. I know you can do it, and we should have been doing it. On another interesting note, so thank you very much again for pushing us down this road. On a great note and a sad note at the same time, our beloved team member will be leaving us very soon, and I'm talking about Dr. Derek Warren. Derek has brought millions of dollars to Southern University system through IBM, millions of dollars worth of talent to Southern University. I've known him many, many years. He was my SGA president, board member, Jaron Young. Set in many seats that you're going to be sitting in as you go through serving as president and board member. He always had that smile he has now. He has no natural enemies. I've been searching for him. Nobody says anything bad about Derek, and rightfully so. So I am very, very saddened to lose him. And we're losing him to arrival. Derek will be the next dean of the College of Business for Grambling State University. Let's give him a round of applause. And please tell my dear friend, President Gallo, that was a very ingenious little damn move. And I envy him for it, but Derek, we are very proud of you and what you meant to Southern. I know you're selling Southern will not end at your selling Grambling. So thank you, and we commend you on your successes over there. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then we return to our agenda, and I want to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gilliam, seconded by Mr. Amadi. All of those in favor, lay it on some of I. Those opposed, I just have it, so adopt it. Item six, public comments. Are there any public comments at this time in reference to any item on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we move on to item seven. Action items A and B. A, request approval of curriculum change, S U B R for the College of Sciences and Engineering. Dr. Sahu, who would make that presentation? Can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my President Chancellor. We have an established process where new ideas come based on demand, based on looking at scanning the external environment. And doing that, the faculty in the College of Sciences and Engineering came up with the idea that it is time for us to offer a construction management program. And they floated the idea, they looked at what is being done at other institutions and how it is relevant to us. And it's important to know that prior, two years ago, we were considered as a regional university, not even a state university, even though we have all this footprint in terms of research accomplishments and in terms of our size and the complexity of the programs we offer, the diversity, the breadth of program that we offer. But in its own wisdom, the state has labeled us as a, now recognized us as an H B C U in the, in the Board of Regents or in the L S U system of higher education. So this allows us to provide programs that's geared towards serving our population that we are, we tend to gravitate towards in terms of, you know, attracting students, developing these students and graduating and placing them. So this effort is in the right direction, Mr. Chancellor, Mr. President, and Mr. Chairman, that it'll provide a much needed degree, much needed education to the minorities in the state of Louisiana and equip them to be constructed, construction managers and also to provide a service to the state. It has gone through the faculty, it has gone through the curriculum committee, all the, all the approval process now. We're asking you to, requesting you to approve it so that it can be presented to the Board of Regents. We have already notified the Board of Regents, they intend to start this program, but it can only be started with your review and approval. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Does Dr. Sahu on item A?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Mr. Gilliam, seconded by Ms. Smith, that we approve item A. All of those in favor, that have been on the sound of aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Item B, request approval of curriculum revision, again, other S U B R program, a Master of Science in Criminal Justice. Dr. Sahu?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. What we did last off last year was looking at a pathway to graduate on time. And so we looked, this was done at the entire university in all programs. We said, look at your curriculum, look at it takes time for a student to graduate, both in the undergraduate and the graduate program. And this conversation, this critical review resulted in looking at what we offer to the students, how it can be offered better so that we, it'll be cost effective, but it'll also utilize faculty talent better, the availability of the faculty. And so again, going through the same process, review process, where it happens at the program and at the faculty level, there was a realization in the criminal justice program, an opportunity not to offer so many electives but to streamline the course offerings in a more predictable, more efficient way. So a student who is coming in can visualize that if I take these courses in this sequence on this semester, I will graduate on time. So this is one of the many examples that we'll, you'll see coming out of S U B R academic programs and effort to enhance student outcomes by being, communicating to the students that these are the courses that will be offered at these semesters. And if you take it in this sequence and we will stand ready to assist them, they will graduate on time. This also will have a positive impact in terms of our formula funding because the Board of Regents is moving away from.
Is T H Harris Learning Center. I don't think you've seen this. This is another project that's, that's coming from Hurt Dollars, working closely with Mr. Hury Lawson, with the Title III Group and, and Hurt and also Mr. Simone Whitmore, who is kind of managing the project. As you know, you have, out in that area, when, when you have kids that are registering, they've been exposed to elements. Well, this is gonna take care of that. That project is, is moving forward very quickly. And again, this is another project that our goal is to have a groundbreaking and something of that nature before the end of this year. My A I is a little slow, but.
You need an upgrade.
The next is this, this is our public safety building, our police station. I know we talked about that a bit. This is kind of elevation and the rendering of that. That building is gonna be located right as you're heading toward the dorms, right as that road forks, it's gonna be right in that particular area. The discussion was two reason why. First of all, infrastructure was provided there such as water and gas and everything that you needed. The second thing is it was felt that that was a good location because again, you're moving into where all the kids are staying. So it's a, it felt that that would make the parents feel very comfortable to seeing that there's, you know, some protection and some, you know, police station right there. So that project is going forward, is into design. And all these hurt projects, the goal is, is to have these groundbreakings before the end of this year. This, this project is, is the STEM building. We are moving forward with that. That project is not with our, we actually have our C M R partner on board. In fact, you, we probably will be doing a groundbreaking, you know, hopefully before the end of the year because James Hall, which is partly on the property where this is gonna be built, will be demoed. That probably is not gonna happen sometime until the end of the year, beginning of the next year because James Hall will be utilized for this, this upcoming semester. But James Hall will be demoed, so we probably have, be establishing something for that project. And Mr. Simone Whitmore is the, is the senior project manager on, on this project. And this is the business building. I mean, Derek asked me about the business when I walked in. The business building is moving forward. I talked, talked to F P N C this morning. We have moved from schematic design and we are moving into, to design development on this particular project. I'm glad that we did that because at one time we thought we were being held up because we were waiting for the C M R. But now we are not. We're moving into design development, so that's, that, that project is moving forward. I'm sure Dean of the Business Center would be glad to hear that. So. Oh, and this is one that you haven't seen. This is the amphitheater, is outdoor classroom amphitheater, which will be built right in front of Mayberry. And if you notice, it's designed in the shape of a bell. And I think at the last Founder's Day program, they talked about what the bell represented. The bell that was once used at Southern University to call students to class was at one time used to call slaves into the field. So we thought that this was be a good rendering and indication of the historic value of what that, what that represented at Southern University. Now have an amphitheater that you will have multiple wonderful events there. Have something like this is gonna be a statement for the university. It's a very good project. And it's been great working with Mr. Lawson, Hury Lawson at that, I guess I did need to differentiate. And Mr. Val Whitmore on this. So and what I think I want to say, the lighting project for the stadium is going very well. And, and it's, we had the actual Public Service Commissioner, they missed in their last meeting. We have another project that's very important and I, I want to allow the Chancellor of, of Suno to, to talk about this. And Dr. Ammons, I can let you use my A I too.
Dr. Ammons, you want to bring your own A I? His A I is defective.
All right. Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, members of the Facilities Committee, Chairman Lawson, Vice Chair Whitfield, President Shields, members of the board, honorable members of the board, I am indeed excited about this next presentation that is on the screen. Back on June thirtieth, just a few days ago, we were notified that we had received approval from the U S Department of Education to construct a nursing building on the campus of Suno. You may recall, just over a year ago, we celebrated the opening of the nursing program by welcoming our first cohort of students and with the ribbon cutting. But upon opening the nursing programs, space issues began to surface. The nursing program currently shares the second floor of the Natural Sciences Building with the Health Information Management Program. And we knew right then that we had to find a way to accommodate the explosive growth of this nursing program. So after buying masks, hand sanitizer and all of the P P P, we realized along with other H B C Us that we had a significant amount of dollars coming from the higher education relief funds, the CARES Act, CARES supplemental, as well as the American Rescue Plan. So we felt that if we were able to get the authority to expand the use of those dollars and respond to COVID, that there would be no better way to respond to COVID than produce more nurses. So what we have here is a rendering of that facility. On the site plan, the, with the green background to the right, it's where the nursing building would be placed. It would be adjacent to the Natural Sciences Building and the Administration Building on the campus. It will have three floors. This is the ground floor. The building will have a total of over thirty-four thousand square feet. On the first floor, we have this huge lecture hall along with the library for the nursing programs and study spaces. On the second floor is where most of the classes will take place. So we have classrooms, laboratories, simulation labs, et cetera, on the second floor. And then on the third floor is where we will have the administrative suite. Our dean, the faculty, as well as other labs. Now, I want to say this, this was definitely a team effort. There is no way that we could have been able to do this at Suno without a team effort. And it started at the White House and also Congress. Congressman Troy Carter, former Congressman and White House Director Cedric Richmond carried the ball for changing the U S Department of Education's rule to allow Suno, Southern University and other H B C Us and minority serving institutions to use our Hurt Dollars for expenditures broader than buying P P P. And so we would be forever grateful to Congressman Carter and former Congressman and Director Richmond for taking up that mantle on behalf, on behalf of H B C Us. And then, of course, this board, you approved our request to submit the proposal to the U S Department of Education. You did that right after we opened the nursing program and we noticed that we were having all of these space issues. And then, Mr. Ken Dawson. I cannot say enough about Mr. Ken Dawson, his expertise and his willingness to spend time with us through every stage of this process. If you only knew all of the hurdles that we had to go through with the U S Department of Education to get to where we are today, you would be astonished. But with Mr. Ken Dawson, we were able to navigate through all of that. And I want to publicly thank him for his partnership and for his commitment to this system. And then, of course, there was Danny Williams, Mr. Danny Williams of Williams Architecture. We had to produce architectural drawings in order for the U S Department of Education to approve our request. And Mr. Williams did this within a matter of weeks. Even though he was going through family issues, the death in his family, he still worked with us to get this done. So our plan is to open this new facility in the fall of twenty twenty-six. And this facility will allow us to move from thirty-five students per class to over a hundred students. We're gonna be relevant. And this facility is gonna allow us to do that. And you can see all the faculty offices. Right now, we have seven offices in the Natural Sciences Building. This will allow us to almost double the faculty for our program. So this is yet another milestone for the nursing program. This year, we received nearly one point five million dollars in private fundraising for nursing. And now here we are with a new building that would be coming out of the ground, hopefully sometime by the end of this year. Agenda of the Board of Regents. So things are moving at Suno for nursing. And then the last thing that I'll say is that with this building, we will now open up space in the Natural Sciences Building for other healthcare programs that we are now developing. Programs in cardio pulmonary science and public health, we are hoping to bring those proposals to you. proposals to you shortly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chancellor, I want to commend you on your work and your leadership on this issue. I remember some time ago, we had a conversation where you said, Ed, there are only so many masks I can buy. We got to figure out a way to re-task some of this money that we've got. And where a lot of people may have slept on the issue of realizing they had extra funds and not spent those funds timely. You saw that there was going to be an issue, and you took leadership on that issue and made sure that we could re-task those dollars and reached out to everyone and pushed very hard to make sure that those dollars were tasked. I remember those conversations and the calls that you asked to be made, and thank you for that. I think this is a much-needed program, and this is going to be a beautiful building to add to the New Orleans campus. Mr. Dawson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just quickly, I want to bring your attention to a couple of things that we have coming up. We have a responsibility with our Board of Regents. And basically, what we have to do, we have to actually produce the projects that's coming up at the next legislative session. I know we just got out of one, okay? And I know, but that's a cycle that continues. So I know a lot of people take a breather after the legislative session, but our word starts again. So we will be speaking with you. I talked with President Shields, and our goal is to bring some projects to you in the next board meeting, because we have to get this, you know, August, to get you to get you to look at it August and September, so that we will have that approved and possibly September to move on to the Board of Regents. We'll be speaking with the Chancellors at the difference of colleges and everything about projects. And Mr. Simon Whitmore is going to come up a little later and talk about, you know, some of the processes of what happened in the last session, how it affect some projects as we move forward. Next thing is, we also had last year, as you all remember, the Board of Regents Site Visit or the Road Show. And that is when they come in and they visit the campuses. So we did it at SUNO, we did it here, we did it also at Sussla, and we had people from Board of Regents there. And I understand from my contact with Board of Regents, they're trying to get even more board members from the Board of Regents to be there. So we will be discussing that with you as well, because quite honestly, it's the Chancellor that leads the discussion as to what's going on on the campus. We're there to help facilitate, and also, and we will assist in whatever we need to do in preparation of those presentations. Just to let you know that also, we just recently had a couple of project selection committees. Recently, we, in the Engineering Selection Committee, the fourth floor of this building will be working with new HVAC, because we had some challenges with that. And I'm sure I can speak to most of the Chancellors, they had challenges with HVAC all over. So we're kind of dealing with that on the fourth floor. The goal is that as we start to take some of the load off of the chill water system around campus by looking at another type of unit, you know, that would assist us. Another thing is the SUNO lighting project is moving forward. That was on selection as well recently, and Dr. Ammons. And the SU Law Center Annex, that was selected in Architectural Selection Committee recently. We have some more things in upcoming selection. Boy, we are bringing the meat lab to our September aboard the SUNO nursing facility. You'll be coming up for the architecture selection, because even though we got to this point, we still got to go through the process of bringing that to architecture selection. We also have an issue with a new cooling tower here on this campus that we're trying to bring to the October Engineering Selection Board, because again, we have a lot of buildings coming on campus, but guess what a lot of buildings on campus mean? Mean that you have more capacity that you have to provide for cooling and other things. So in order to have, I talked with Mr. Pitts about that, and he is in dire need of a new cooling tower. So our goal is to use some of our deferred maintenance dollars to get that accomplished. And also, the Sussla HVAC issue, Chancellor, we talked about some of that. We're looking at, there's some HERF dollars going toward that project. We got a couple of projects that we can do that below the mark, that we need to take it to selection, but we also will be taking some of those that does a higher number toward that. Okay? So with that, we are, I just wanted to let you know, because I know you're hearing about HVAC issues throughout the system, we are very focused on that. We're focused on trying to come up with solutions in order to make it happen, and quick solutions, but I'm sorry with FPNC, you know, things don't move, you know, very quickly. It's a process. And I think I got a men's on my right there. So, okay, so another thing is, I want to say that the disaster mega shelter, the disaster mega shelter, that's something we have discussed before, and we were kind of in limbo about where that was going to go. But that was a meeting that was held about a month or so ago. That project is moving forward. In fact, President Shields, I think there's going to be a groundbreaking with the governor sometime around September. Okay, on that, yes, on that, on that, on that, on that project. And we are moving forward with the Swine and Portry Buildings. That was some deferred maintenance issue. That is going well. We got a lot of things happening, and so, but we're very proud of it. So I want to say that some of the issues you're going to have, you may get some complaints because they're going to be growing pains with all of this growth. There will be growing pains, but that's the price of progress, okay? So I'll ask Mr. Simon Whitmore to come up and give you some updates on the last session, how it affects some of our projects.
Good morning. I'm going to be very brief, because nothing really changed for us between the last version of the capital outlay bill that we saw when the governor signed the act. The only thing that has changed for us is that yesterday, State Bond Commission met and approved some lines of credit. What's important for us to know is that they did not do priority five to one cash conversion, P1 amounts. So that means, for example, we have about a $14 million appropriation of P1 for the STEM building. We don't have a line of credit of $14 million right now. That does not slow our project down, so it's not a need to panic. But the problem is that the bill is overappropriated, so we have to be prepared that it will affect some of our projects. So for example, we don't have our five to one yet on our STEM building. I expect that we will get it, because we can demonstrate that we'll spend it. We don't have our five to one for our renovation of our law library, because again, we don't need it right now, but we can demonstrate that we will spend it. I expect that they'll give it to us. But if we were in a situation where we weren't ready to spend it, those dollars would be vulnerable. The projects that are vulnerable now are the projects that have P2 appropriations. So our new chilled water loop on our campus that's very important to us, that has a P2. That can't move until it gets a line of credit, and P2s most likely won't be granted. There's not enough capacity. So in order to grant P2s, they would have to go back and take away some priority one dollars from other existing projects. So in terms of where we are with projects, then, our law library hopefully will move forward later when they do get around to granting those conversions. But our Career Learning Center for the Law Center, which had only priority five, probably will not move this year. The other project that would be affected, again, I mentioned the chill water loop, we will not be able to complete design. However, we were given some general fund dollars, so we will be able to start design. We'll be able to start assessing what's needed for that, but as far as getting into the real design of that chill water loop, we probably won't get a priority two cash line of credit. Our new lab school, fortunately, we have general fund, so we will be able to start the design of that project. We have our nursing school. We have on campus here in Baton Rouge, we have a renovation and addition project. It is not yet had its new P5 granted yet. No need to panic. We expect that we'll get it later. They didn't grant any of those. So the big thing that happened yesterday is there's a lot of capacity added to the bill that they simply can't fund. And so they will have to do a lot more analysis in order to decide exactly where to put the dollars that are available. Our projects, I think, are positioned to proceed. We can make a case for everything that we have in the bill. For example, the nursing school, we have a donation of $10 million that we're asking the state to match. So again, I don't expect that there's any problem with that. The only thing we want to do is manage expectations that if someone says to you, we didn't get a line of credit yesterday, it's not a cause to panic yet. The projects that won't move are projects that we expected couldn't move because they weren't positioned to move. The only other thing, so, let's see, university cafeteria at SUNO, for example, we were able to get general fund last year. So while it looks like it's not moving because of a line of credit, it's able to move anyway, because we still have cash to continue that planning. Sussla Gym Complex, we held back on the design of that project because we didn't have enough priority five. We don't have that line of credit yet. We expect that we will get it. So if you have specific questions about any of that, the message here today is don't panic because of those lines of credit. There's going to be a lot of analysis that the state has to do to determine which lines of credit to grant, but our projects are positioned to move. We can make a good case that we can use our lines of credit. And so if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them in the future, offline or here this morning.
Mr. Rutledge?
I thank both of you for the outstanding presentation as usual. Mr. Dawson, I just emailed you. It's Senate Bill 132, but it's Act 395 of this year's session. It becomes effective August 1, and it allows each higher institution, even for state fully-funded projects, to request leave to have a third party to manage them from a program management standpoint. So that's another tool in your toolbox. I know you are frustrated as are most higher institution and state and non-state because of the bottleneck you sometimes experience dealing with FPNC. So that's another. And then we expanded it from $5 million to $10 million for those projects, I think, for those projects that are non-state funded. But I emailed it to you. If you don't get it, let me know. Also, I just want to publicly, we desperately need a new lab school, and I want to publicly, again, thank Senator Fields and our entire legislative delegation. I see Representative Carpenter is here. I see Representative Brass is here as well. I think we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of a million and a half to $2 million in cash this year for design. Yeah, and so I just want to thank all of them for their work to get us at the front of the line in getting a new lab school. Thank you.
Chairman Lawson?
Thank you so much for what both of you do. And I was teasing, we have some newer board members still. P1, they don't have a clue what their is priority. And HERF is Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. I'm not expecting, that's kind of the old COVID money. So Brother Jaron, I want to make sure, Mr. President, board member, feel free to say, what does that mean? I'm still doing it. Thank you again. One of the things that's concerning to me, when we get people to invest time and money in doing conceptual renderings, right? I'm concerned particularly when they're confident they've done work with the state. Well, when a project's approved, they may not even get the job. Is there anything in the works? I know there's some discussion that folk who have invested the time and have a proven track record of working with the state, that they could be given points or consideration or allow the institution to have more people on the selection committee?
At this time, it's, Southern University has one vote. Okay, we have one vote to whomever we recommend for that process. And I think that even Representative Brass and I have had, we've talked about that, about what some of the needs to maybe even change some legislation that would change that particular process, but that is the process at this particular point. We have been fortunate to get some that we have, you know, recommended, but we don't get it all.
I'm going to wait out and say that I'd like to see that change is nothing that happened in the last four years, first of all, last eight years. This has been a problem for several years, because African-American and minority contractors often suffer in that process. So I think we need to have some serious discussion legislators, and I know you all have, that we kind of level the field on that, because it's not right, and it doesn't afford the opportunity. Many have come through our schools to benefit from the time and effort they put into seeing these things come to fruition, only to see that project given to a firm that we'll never see again.
Yes, sir. That's good.
Any other comments? Thank you both. Is there any other business to come between, before the Facilities and Property Committee? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dr. Tarver, seconded by Ms. Gaines. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll go directly into the Finance Committee meeting, and I'm going to ask that the Vice Chair, Board Member Gilliam, call that committee to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee is here by call to order. Before we go to the roll call, Mr. President, Mr. Honorable Board Member, Mr. Fondal from Lake Charles has volunteered to, sir, we do not have a full contingency.
I'm the Vice Chair.
Whatever, I'm sorry. I jumped from his Vice Chair, the Honorable Ann Smith.
Thank you.
I'm looking at personally, I'm sorry. Take charge of that committee, Board Member Ann Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finance Committee is now called to order. A roll call, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Atlanta Williams.
Absent.
Mrs. Ann Smith.
Present.
Mr. Sam Gilliam. Mrs. Kristy Reeves. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Dr. Leon Tarver. Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Adoption of the agenda, please. Motion. It has been moved by Ann Second. Public comments, we have none. Action items. Request for approval of ratification of fiscal year 2022-23 budget adjustment. And I'm going to take items one through six at this time and ask for a request for accepting. Yes.
With my Vice President here.
I was going to ask for discussion afterwards.
Can I move for approval of five eight?
Okay.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the request. At this time, I'll take questions. Any questions? No questions?
No, oh, is this from the committee members? I would just like to know from Mr. McClinton whether or not there are any, whether or not there are any variances that we should be aware of and concerned about? If you'd highlight them for me.
Okay, you're referring to item A, are you, which one are you referring to?
In any of the budget.
One through six.
Okay, one through six. The answer is no. See, basically, item A is a ratification, we're asking for a ratification, and all that is, is we're required to send a budget form through based on the amount of funds that we got during the supplemental appropriation. So all we are doing now is doing a BA seven to bring those dollars in. Item B, if I can move forward, item B is, we're asking for ratification based on the fact that the spending authority, the Law Center had excess spending authority, and the Baton Rouge campus needed spending authority. And it's no money change in hand, it's just spending authority that we are requesting to be able to be transferred from the Law Center to the Baton Rouge campus. These two items have already been approved by the Division of Administration. We had a deadline that we had to submit the information to them, and it was prior to the board meeting. That's why we're asking for ratification.
What about in the interim financial report?
Okay, that's, yes, sir. Okay, on the interim financial reports, based on the reports that we have from the campuses, all the campuses for this fiscal year has indicated, and based on our review, they will close with a balanced budget. The Baton Rouge campus, they are using $1.8 million of HERF dollars to balance their budget, and the New Orleans campus is using 3.4 million, which means that since it's one-time dollars, when they prepare their budget for the 23, 24 fiscal year, those budgets will need to be adjusted in order to make certain that we begin with a balanced budget.
Are those one-time dollars being allocated for one-time purposes or for recurring expenditure?
Well, based on the information that I have, the, well, the direction that we gave there to be used for one-time expenditures. I want to, I know in the New Orleans campus, they do have some reserve funds that they can use to help offset that number. And the Baton Rouge campus will be And the Baton Rouge campus will be, if they didn't, if they were not using them for one time, they will have to actually reduce the budget. But the budget that will be submitted to you in August would have to be, will have to be a balanced budget.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. McGee, a point of clarification, Mr. Des Moines. I'm referencing in the packet, page 84, 86, and 87, where we looked at, and I'm not going to call the numbers out, but with the exception of the Law Center and the Agricultural and Presidential Research Center, everybody has some concerns there. And I think your response to Attorney Des Moines a few minutes ago, for instance, SUNO was using that 3.4 million to balance that budget, but that's a one-time expenditure, right?
Right.
The budget going forward cannot be based upon that, can it?
That is correct, no.
It has to be based upon the current appropriation that's been provided for us in what's it, HP1?
Right.
That's something we need to stay attuned to, Board Members.
That's right.
The only other statement I would make is that if they do have reserve funds, they would have to tap those reserve funds, but reserve funds are also one-time, which means that you can use it that year, but you can't use it going forward. But we'll be looking at that and talking with the CFOs about these type items.
Chair. I recognize the Chair.
One thing that I feel that means a lot to me, and I think it means a lot to this board, is that we ought to do what we should be doing best, is bring some students to the table and get them enrolled, registered, and more importantly, when they get enrolled and registered, give them the opportunity to graduate. That is the best cure we can provide, in my opinion, to correct a lot of the challenges we're having. Am I correct, Mac?
Yes, sir. I agree with you wholeheartedly.
So everything I want to see as we move into, and I talk to the Chairlady, and thank you for standing in, Chairlady Ann Smith, Dr. Williams, about having budget hearings, we're going to do that. And I think they've already started on the Baton Rouge campus, they may be completed. I want to know how we're invested, Mr. President, in doing just that, recruiting and retaining and rewarding, I call it, by affording these students to graduate. And until we start investing a little bit more in that, I think we're failing in what I think our mission should say we're about. That's my opinion from here now, and I'm going to be driving everybody to that unless the board guides me otherwise. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thanks for the comments. Do we have additional comments? Mr. Fondale?
Thank you. Mr. McClintock, I know we've had conversations in the past. Chairman Lawson is correct in us working to retain more students. And I have, from time to time, stated that I think the retention of 200 students to 250 may reflect an additional million dollars. I know we've had this conversation before, and I think this is information not only this board, but also, you know, the entire system should need to know and how important retention is in keeping our students and making sure, because what you're saying is, because it is a one-time adjustment next year, we're not going to be able to use those funds, and either we're going to have to make some cuts, or we're going to have to find a way to increase the enrollment to a certain amount to fill those gaps. And you're saying in one case, the gap is going to be, what, 1 million?
Right, 1.8 for Baton Rouge.
So that would be the equivalent of us retaining an additional 200 to 300 students to fill that gap, would that be?
That would be the best way to do it, sir.
Okay, all right. So it's upon us as a board and as a system to come up with a plan to increase our retention level. And I think there are things in place right now that we may need to enhance upon. So I just wanted to make sure it be clear to those who are here and those that are watching, that the retention is going to help us to be able to fill those gaps by retaining more students. And that challenge is going to be upon us as a board to come up with that solution and pass it on. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll back up and go to the request for action item 5 and 6, both have been discussed. So at this time, I'll take a motion to accept. It has been moved and seconded that we approve.
So you're, excuse me, you're just talking about action items 5A and B?
5A and B. I'm sorry. It has been moved and approved. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Informational items, do we have any? None? Any other business? No other business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. It has been moved and seconded adjournment.
Thank you, Madam Chairlady. Now, we'll get to Dr., Mr. Gilliam, Chair of Personnel Committee, asking that he call his committee to order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Affairs Committee is hereby called to order. We have, I believe, too, some absences here. And, Mr. President, we're going to ask, I believe, Fondale, or someone else to volunteer, would ask to the esteemed Board Member from Shreveport, Mr. Jaron Young, if he would volunteer to serve in this capacity. And so with that stated, Mr. President, could you give us a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Sam Gilliam.
Present.
Mrs. Christie Reeves. Attorney Jody Amady. Mrs. Azelle Dudley. Dr. Leon Tarver. Dr. Orlando Williams. Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
Present.
Mr. Jiron Young. If we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and we have some changes. We have an amendment. Item number D8 should be deleted, for the record, repeating. Agenda item D8 should be deleted. This is a duplicate from last month's agenda and was not intended as such. Okay? Okay, I have a, I'm sorry, ma'am. D8, Agenda, action item D8, has been deleted. Okay? I hear a motion for approval, subject to listeners. It's removed by Mr. Fondale and seconded by Mrs. Idris, that our agenda would be thus approved. We move to Agenda item number 4, public comments, and we have four individuals who have indicated that they would like to make public comments. I'm going to, in an effort to fairness, we're going to go in alphabetical order. That's all right. The first person appears to be Professor Anthony Agidi, and I hope I'm pronouncing that right, sir. Please come forward. It's a pleasure to see you again before, sir. I believe we last spoke, and you last spoke to us, I believe, in Shreveport, I believe it was.
...... Vice President, person of the hour.
Pleasure to have you, sir. You will have three minutes to speak, sir.
Yes, sir.
And indeed, for point of clarification, if indeed you could, I indicate which Agenda item that you would.
The Agenda item, item H, SUS reorganization.
Okay, sir.
Right. Again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to reflect the minds and feelings of about 239 full-time faculty members on campus here. We really appreciate you placing this on the agenda. We have been asking for a reorganization of the system. For why now? Why is that true? This is the only campus without a full-time chancellor. We have a full-time chancellor at SUNO, Shreveport, Law Center, Act Center. This is the only campus without a full-time chancellor. As a result of the pipeline chancellor we have, there are so many conflicts on campus, and it is difficult for faculty to go to a particular point because we don't know who is who. I know there's no, no society is conflict-free, but if we have a full-time chancellor, it will reduce the conflict we'll be having on this campus. Again, look at our campus. School is starting in three weeks. The registrar quit. The dean of Honors College, begone, no replacement. There are several key positions. Why is this? Because we don't have a full-time chancellor that will monitor this campus. If you can do this, look, honorable board members, we are not here doing this for personal gradizement. With me, I may look like this, I've been teaching here for about 32 years, I'm not doing it for them to honor me, but we just want to lead this campus the way we made it. My colleagues here, they've been here like me. We are not here for anybody to compensate us. No, we just want to create opportunity for our student. Remember, when this campus used to bubble, on weekends, I used to come over here just to enjoy myself. We don't see that no more. Faculty are leaving. Staff are leaving. It is time for our honorable board members to take immediate action by giving us a chancellor, a full-time chancellor that will work with the faculty. Again, thank you all so very much.
And we thank you so very much, sir, for bringing your concerns to us. The next individual who has requested to speak is Professor Thomas Miller. Would you please, Dr. Miller? And it's good to see you again. I believe you last spoke with us in New Orleans. Always a pleasure to answer you.
That is exactly so. And great to see you again.
It's always a pleasure, sir. Indeed, again, you'll have three minutes to speak, sir. And if you would, for point of clarification, would you indicate the Agenda item that you wish to speak to?
Yes. Speaking to Agenda item H, the system reorganization plan. Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, President Shul, members of the board, it's a pleasure always to be here with you. I'm going to be very brief, and that is to say that when the reorganization that brought the positions of President and Chancellor together some 10 years or so ago, the faculty senate expressed at that time its grave concerns. We felt as though this was going to be an awkward model, which, in a phrase, puts the responsibility, gives the chancellor of the campus all the responsibility, but none of the authority. And that has proved to be, in our opinion, an ineffective model. And so, without further ado, I'd simply say that speaking with members of the faculty, certainly members of the faculty senate, the, it is the unanimous opinion that this is going to be a very positive change for our campus, separating the roles of President and Chancellor. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Miller, indeed. The next individual who has requested to speak is Dr. Jill Murray. Is Dr. Murray here? Dr. Murray, good morning to you. It's a pleasure having you with us.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here and allowing me to speak. I'm speaking to Agenda item 5E, the approval of personnel action on positions of over 60,000 at SUNO. And I am the Vice President of the SUNO Faculty Senate, and I'm representing Faculty Senate today. We're asking that the board delay its vote on SUNO new faculty hires. The Faculty Senate has concerns about categories of appointment, rank of appointment, and the awarding of tenure without a probation period. These concerns are based on the SUNO faculty handbook policy, which references system policy. Specifically, those are 4.3.1, categories of faculty appointment. Faculty members appointed at the rank of instructor are designated as temporary appointees to meet a short-term need. 4.72, members at the rank of instructor shall be on an annual appointment and are not eligible for tenure. 4.73, procedures for recommending tenure, the board may, under extraordinary circumstances and upon proper recommendations, waive the probationary period. 4.8, recommending promotion, under exceptional circumstances, with proper recommendation from all levels, waive the probationary period for promotion. Among other implications, violation of these policies has implications for SACS and for other accrediting bodies, such as the Council for Social Work Education, which I'm most familiar with. We're requesting transparency in the hiring process and in the awarding of tenure, and we ask that exceptions be made truly as exceptions and not as the norm. We ask that the board delay the vote on new hires until the next board meeting and create an investigatory panel to review the policies and ensure decisions about new employees and that they comply with university and system policy prior to final board approval. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for your input, Dr. Murray. The next individual who has requested to speak is Dr. Albert L. Samuels. And again, Dr. Samuels, you know the procedure. We give you three minutes, sir, and if you would, point of clarification, if you would tell us which item or items you would care to reference for our clarification.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. To the, Mr. President, Secretary of the Board, I will be rising in reference to item H, which refers to a proposal for a system reorganization, reorganization. We still had this platform about eight or nine years ago to argue that the proposal to consolidate the position of President and Chancellor was a bad idea. The board is wisdom, decided to go ahead with that anyway. Our experience has proven that that is simply not a good model for the Baton Rouge campus. We, we have a number of challenges specific to the Baton Rouge campus that simply require having a, someone who is full-time. The structure of our system requires the President, the President Chancellor to be both the system head and also be divided among the various campuses. That is, you know, as we predicted, that's going to create a lot of problems. We had a discussion just a few minutes ago about enrollment challenges, for example, on the Baton Rouge campus. That exists because we have a number of systems on this campus that simply don't work. And so you need someone who people have to respond to, and the President Chancellor is divided in so many different ways. And so I urge you to take this opportunity to, to right this ship. I want to conclude by saying, this is, this is not, in any way, this is not a personal thing at the current president, the president. Actually, I think this will make the life of the President Shul a lot easier, because it will, this will free him up to, to raise, to raise funds, to coordinate his strategy, and otherwise build goodwill for the system while we have a leader on the Baton Rouge campus, you know, who can make the trains run on time. I think that's what we need to do.
Thanks so very much for your input, Dr. Samuels, indeed. We have a number of personnel items before us, but it would appear expedient that, I believe, G and H, since we have heard so much concern, especially about H, that we would address those two separately. But what would be your pleasure, committee, for doing a global on action items, A, 5A through F, I believe? What is your pleasure? Through F? Please. I have two questions. Mr. Smith, I believe.
Again, I have a question as to the hiring of the faculty, not the administrative part, but the faculty. Can you, somebody give me some clearance on it, please?
Who would be able to address that? Would that be, which campus are we talking about?
SUNO, the SUNO campus.
SUNO, okay. Then we're referencing. Okay, then we're referencing Chancellor Ammons if you would.
Well, first of all, let me say this. I agree with Dr. Murray that there is a process for faculty being granted tenure. There is an era in the PAFs where these two faculty members are listed as tenured faculty. They are instructors for the nursing program, and there would be a process. And so, what I would ask the Board to do would not delay the hiring of the faculty as instructors. That's what we are requesting. The era is in the, I just noticed it, is in the PAF where it says tenured faculty. They would not be tenured upon appointment.
Specifically, which, under E, I assume, you're under?
Mrs. Trenice Monday.
Don't call the name, if you would, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just give me the number. Five and six?
What is it? Five?
And six. So, your recommendation, Mr. Chair?
Right, yes, she would be an instructor. Not a tenured professor.
Okay. Does that, that answers?
No, the salary, the salary is correct.
It's going to be the same?
Yes.
That's for five and six?
Yes, for five and six. No, he's tenured. He went through the process.
Mr. Smith, does that?
So, it's five and six. The titles should be instructor.
Okay.
Does it answer, address your concern, Mrs.?
It does.
I believe, Mr. Dudley, you had a concern or question?
Right.
I was either legal or regarding the policy, consistent, consistency with the policy as raised by the public comment. For, for basically all of the new appointments, the waives, the tenure, my question is about our consistency with system and university policy. I just want confirmation on that and respect to the question that was raised from someone.
I think, I think they're requesting clarification, but go ahead, Counsel.
On the item that has them being tenured in the comments that were made, generally, most folks are hired in, in an instructor and/or on a tenure track, unless they're coming with experience. Then there would be a waiver of the tenure process. Are you asking about how they were evaluated to be offered these positions? I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
The request from the public comment was about delaying it and asking us to review the process to make sure we are compliant with university and system policy. And I'm simply asking about where we stand on that.
On the delay?
No, not the delay, compliance.
On compliance?
I think I hear the basic question being, are we in compliance? I'm sorry?
One at a time. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
I'm standing here.
I was listening to Counsel. The question, as I appear, being raised by Mr. Dudley.
Is about compliance, whether or not these folks were?
I would think, based upon the clarification from Chancellor Ammons regarding the fact that it was, that number five is tenure-track instructor, I think would, would indicate that that is in compliance. Especially given number two, he indicated it had gone through the tenure process. And I think that one is more, more so just going into his faculty role.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. I believe I heard some other questions. Ms. Gaines?
Yes, thank you. My question is, removing tenure from E5 and E6, does this address everything Dr. Murray said in her question? Does this resolve everything that Dr. Murray said by removing the tenure from E5 and E6 to instructor?
I think it does.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other question? Okay. And we have before, we have, we're opposing, if indeed, if your pleasure is Action 5A through F, and Chair will entertain a motion to that extent. Please, sir.
We're going to be taking those two words, the tenure out of that? Okay, so as a part of that motion, we're going to correct it at this point in time?
And you can make that part of your motion, I believe.
Okay.
That that, that item, what was that, five, would be changed to, instead of tenure professor in the instance of number five, and tenure-track instructor? Well, I guess we can just say instructor.
Yeah, and if we did it, my continued point of information, if we continue to do that, we can put it in global with the exception of those two. Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to put D and E in global with five and six, the exception of tenure being taken off to address the concerns. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. The motion has been moved by Mr. Fondal and seconded by Ms. Dudley that we would consider action items 5A through F approved. Those in favor, please let me know by sign of aye. Opposers, nay. Hearing none, these items, they might?
I have a point of order. I see a little unreadiness by the Counsel back there.
I just didn't know, I think Board Member Fondal indicated D and E. And, and, and then when it was called back, Mr. Gillum included A through E. So, I just wanted to make sure.
In my motion, if, if we could include A? Yeah, A through E. A through E, with the exception of five and six, correcting tenure on there so that we can advance it. All right?
It has been moved and seconded, is that the one we had?
Yes.
Good. Those in favor, then, let me know by sign of aye. Opposers, nay. This motion is approved. That means that we still have to deal with item number F, which is a request, I believe, of absence for Professor Tracy Reed at Sussler. For that, if you will, Chancellor from Shreveport, if you would give us clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Tracy Reed is requesting sabbatical. She's one of our chemistry professors. She's requested in twelve months. She have met the requirements for sabbatical, and we're requesting that she be paid seventy-five percent of her salary while she's on sabbatical.
You said twelve months, but we only hire persons on a nine-month basis? So, what, how, what is the, what's the difference between the nine and the twelve? You said twelve months.
She's requesting to be out for twelve months. And she is hired on a nine-month basis, but she's requested to be out for twelve months, for a year, for sabbatical purposes.
So, you said seventy-five percent is on the nine?
For the nine months, yes.
Does that answer the concern, Dr. Talbott? Counselor Short?
Counselors, I thought we had taken the necessity for board approval on stuff like this away.
So, previously, we removed the need for board approval for FMLA leave, but not for sabbatical leave. But if, if the Board would like that, we can include that in a newer vision.
Okay, but as it stands, the current rule is that indeed it should come to, oh, I see another, one of your Counsel behind you giving me an amen back there, too. Okay. All right, we have before us then this request from Sussler for leave of absence for Tracy, Dr. Tracy Reed or Professor Tracy Reed. What is your pleasure?
Motion.
It's removed by Mr. Fondal, seconded by Ms. Dudley, that this request to grant leave to Professor Tracy Reed would be approved. Those in favor, please let me know by sign of aye. Opposers, nay. Though, that's the A's habit. We move to item number G, and I believe, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This, this is big time.
Yes, it is.
Dear friend, this is a request approval of the recommendation of Chancellor Emeritus for Dr. Leodre Williams at the Southern University Agriculture Research and Extension Center. I see him sitting in the office, in the audience out there. But, Mr. Chairman, let me defer to you. This is a mutual friend of ours, all of ours, has made a humongous contribution to the university in general and, of course, to the Agriculture Extension and Research Center in particular. Been moved by somebody over there, by Dr. Talbott and seconded by Ms. Dudley, that we would indeed approve the normanclature of Chancellor Emeritus for Dr. Leodre Williams. And it is such a pleasure to see, I said, those in favor, please let me know.
And you're right. It's like in the Baptist church, when you get the Holy Ghost, you just can't keep it to yourself.
Did we carry the motion?
This will make, this will make a Catholic-speaking tongues right here, so great. I am very excited about this moment. I mean, this is just, I'm embarrassed that it's taken this long to recognize him. It was an oversight, I can assure you, because he's so deserving of this. This guy, as he approached the podium, well, we're going to ask the Chancellor, Dr. MacMeans, approach it first. This is probably one of the most unselfish gentlemen with a spirit of humbleness that you've never seen until you meet Dr. Lee Audrey Williams. He's an emotional guy. He will teach you how to cry, and his love for Southern is, is just off the chart. He's been a mentor of mine, and I'm not an agriculture major. I wear a pin on my lapel. He told me, if you're going to get on this board and if you love the alumni, Myron, get this pin. Not many people have it, and I have my pin on and I wear it regularly because I'm a die-hard alumnus of this university. And Dr. MacMeans, will you bring this guy with this enormous statue that will never be missed at Southern University, whether he's in our presence or not, and tell us why he is so worthy of this accomplishment that we're about to bestow upon him? Designation. Shields, colleagues, and the Southern University family. I, I'm kind of emotional. The reason why this came to me was that someone recognized Dr. Leodre Williams as Emeritus, and so immediately I put my people on researching it. And although it was talked about, it never came to fruition. And I would just like to say, as a point of personal privilege, on day one of my job twenty-six years ago, when I became an administrator at West Virginia State University, I had an opportunity to talk to this man, because I was nervous, I stepped straight out of the laboratory. Birkenstock lab coat, you name it. And Dr. Leodre Williams is an icon. He is a pioneer. One of the things that people do not know, besides starting his career in nineteen sixty-five, was he was second in charge of the individuals that fund all hundred and six, hundred and seven land-grant institutions at USDA. He was over cooperative extension for fifty states and the US territories. He is an icon, second to none, good signal man, too. I'll throw that out there.
Yeah, you leave that alone.
I wanted to wait for you to vote for that first, you know? Too many of y'all other guys up there. So, but he is a mentor, a leader, the first Chancellor of the Southern University Ag Center, and he led for fourteen years with distinction and honor. I consider him a friend, a colleague, a mentor. And if it were not for Dr. Williams, I wouldn't be standing here before you. But I also want to say this, and I have to steal Dr. Williams' thunder, because he probably will mention it. But I, I had a chance yesterday to go back and see the twentieth-year anniversary interview of Dr. Talbott and Dr. Williams. I will send that to the Board. It is amazing, and talk about how the Southern University Ag Center was established and how we are the only historically black land-grant institution to elevate the tripartite mission to the level of Chancellor. No other institution can say that. So, with, with all that said, I would like to bring forward to you Chancellor Emeritus, Dr. Leodre Williams.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President, thank you for this honor. In the building next door, I think it's still called the Women's Gym, my first time on this campus was for a contest at building. I was a ninth grader coming to participate in statewide parliamentary procedure queers contest. Robert's Rules of Order. In studying this, I thought everything should be run by Robert's Rules of Order. So, with this information and new knowledge, I carried it back to my rural Baptist church and tried to train the Deacons on how meetings should be run. In fact, I got condensed versions of Robert's Rules of Order and held meetings at our home to train them for those who could read. At another board, at another meeting of the church, I didn't think things were going just right. So, I said to them, I rise to a point of order. And one of the Deacons said, boy, what are you talking about? But that was my first trip to Southern. I came back many other occasions, and then to graduate. We had faculty members who challenged you and were concerned about your total development. People like Edward Brantley, who was a dairy scientist. But he would tell you, you can talk about old Bossy like she's a cow, and you can say anything you want to say about her. But when you write about her, you better use proper grammar, or you won't hear the last W. And there were many faculty members who influenced what I became. I was hired the last person in America with the title of Assistant County Agent for Boycott and Negroes. The passage of the Civil Rights Act changed that. I kept that title for six weeks. No other person earned that title after. But that was the lowest position that one could hold in the extension service. Later on, I was hired by extension. And with this title, starting with this title, I was able to move on to the Administrator of Extension at the national level. I was prepared to do, or I probably didn't know any better, but I was prepared to take on anything that came because I had been prepared at Southern. And when I received my Alumni Card on graduation, all the graduates were inducted into the alumni. I thought that as my past spoke to heaven. I could do anything. I've had many opportunities to do things. I've had the opportunity to substitute for the Secretary of Agriculture, a cabinet position. I've been educational consultant, East Africa, West Africa, various countries, to help give some structure to the educational system of Ethiopia after the passing of Haile Selassie. And things that I never dreamed of doing. things that I'd never dreamed of doing. But when the opportunity came, I accepted the challenge. I'm glad I did. And one of the competitive meetings among HBCUs, we were having so much success in grant writing and getting additional funds for Southern. Heading up educational organizations, some of the people started complaining saying that the only problem I have with the people from Southern is they think they should win everything. And my response was hallelujah. Again, thank you for this. My family is here with me, all except one son-in-law, but all of our kids Oh, okay. All right. Okay. I didn't know you. But all of them are here. Two months ago, I lost my wife, who was also a Ja- uh, a Jaguar, two degrees from Southern, also taught prime time, part-time at Southern University. But thank you for this honor. I'll remember it forever. Thank you.
If you will, uh, Dr. Audrey, after Dr. Williams speaks, we're gonna ask that entire family, we're gonna give that opportunity to take a picture with them and with you, uh, come forward. I just didn't want you to scatter too far. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. President, members of the board and all others who are assembled. It is indeed a beautiful morning here on the bluff. Of course, we are in the presence of agricultural excellence, if you will. Um, it was just stated that there are so many giants in this room. Uh, from Dr. Bendelli, who is in the room. Would you stand, Dr. Bendelli? Dr. Adele Brown, Ms. Julia, so many people uh, that were instrumental in starting the Ag Center. But of course, it all starts with one person and that person is being honored today. And it's none other than our very own Dr. Leodre Williams. And it's so interesting because life really does come full circle. Because he hired me 20 years ago. And now I stand here as a Vice Chancellor at the Ag Center. And it's just to say that Dr. Williams has not only touched my life, but he's transformed the lives of so many people around this country. You have poured into people so selfishly. He's a trailblazer. And I'm excited to announce it on behalf of Dr. McMeans that Dr. Williams will be the first African-American inducted into the Louisiana Agricultural Hall of Fame this spring. That deserves a round. And so, as you can tell, Dr. Williams always had the best jokes. He played a mean Hannah Blackjack. Lots of life stories. And he loved his family. He was a Christian, is a Christian, and he loves Southern University. Loves Southern University. So today, Dr. Williams, we honor you and the trailblazer that you are. And we have this token of appreciation which states, let's see which way I want it to. All right. Southern University Agricultural Research and Extension Center and the College of Agricultural Family and Consumer Sciences in recognition of meritorious service to the land-grant program at Southern University and recommendation of the Chancellor Dean of the Ag Center and the College of Agricultural Family and Consumer Sciences hereby designate Dr. Leodre Williams Chancellor Emeritus effective on the 21st day of July 2023. And for the many seeds that you have sown, we, the Land Grant Campus, dedicate one fruit-bearing pecan tree at Southern University Pecans Orchard in your name. And so we have this to commemorate that. We love you, Doc. You want to say something? You ready to go take pictures?
Whatever.
All right, listen. The family is, would you please join us?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I can get them. Can everybody kind of scoot that way a little more? I can see everybody. Yeah, yeah, I can see them.
We need you to come to this side. Mr. Fandell, come over this side.
Okay, hold that on three. One, two, three. Stay there. Again, look here, nice smile, no blinking. And one more time.
Now, can we get just the family? Thank you. Chancellor McMeans, stay in. Dr. McMeans. Dr. McMeans, stay in the picture. Okay, Dr. Williams, we're gonna do one more with the College of Ag and the Ag Center family. So the College of Ag and Ag Center family, if you'll join us. And those who are retired from the Ag Center, please, by all means. It snowed. Go to the back. Is that everybody going once, twice?
The, uh, I, I, yeah, I, I, this is still the personnel fast. So we're back in session, if you will. Uh, we are honored again and just privileged. It's not often.
If you will.
Do you have your attention, please?
If you will.
It's not often that you have the measure of a man like Leodre Williams in your presence. It's such a pleasure. For those of you, uh, younger members of either this board or in the audience, you have just experienced quite an event. And some of us oldsters who were kind of slow and moving, we were having a moment. It got emotional for us, too, I think, did it not, Dr. Tarver? Because we go back.
Because I had the honor of recommending him to be Chancellor when we created the this fourth campus. And in creating the fourth campus, it helped save the university. Because during that time, there were bills in the legislature, three or four years in a row, to dismantle Southern University.
Yeah.
By taking, we only had three campuses. If you took one of those campuses away,
The system.
It would dissolve the system.
Yeah.
And so we discovered that the Ag Center and the Law Center were left out of the consent decree. So here was a wonderful opportunity to activate it. We did. And the fashion established the campus. And of course, who else in the world but Dr. Leodre Williams? And of course, in the Law Center, we took the law school out of the Baton Rouge campus and also made it a separate campus. That's why we have a five-campus system today. Uh, but thanks to agriculture and to Law Center, Mr. Pierre, uh, we still have a a robust Southern University system today, and I hope it continues.
Thank you, Dr. Tarver. We are indeed indebted to Dr. Leodre Williams for so much. I remember, uh, thanks to to the generosity of you, Dr. Tarver. Uh, we, the three of us, a group, Dr. Tarver and Dr. Williams was part of that group. We did two weeks, I believe, in South Africa, Mozambique, and just had a marvelous experience at the time. Um, so again, thank you for the contribution, Dr. Williams. Uh, we're ready. We'll go on with the next agenda, Mr. Chairman. Okay? Uh, the next item on here is item number H. This is a request approval of Southern University System Reorganization Plan. But before, uh, even considering, uh, do I defer to the?
You know, to the President.
To the President, please.
Yes, um, thank you. Chairman Lawson, Vice Chairman Ronnie Whitfield, distinguished board, chancellors, faculty senate members. I appreciate this opportunity. And while it is always a dangerous thing to give lawyer a captive audience, I will try not to prattle on too long. But there are a couple of things I'd like to say, um, before I make this suggestion for a change. I've had the privilege of being in higher education as an administrator for 42 years. And though it may not be ob- obvious, I think I am educable. Uh, a couple of things I learned from people that I watched that served in leadership roles was that don't take things personally and don't hold grudges. It it's extraordinarily important when you sit in a role like I do because if you're not humble enough to sort of take that and move on and understand that people have very real investments and concerns, you can think it's all about you. That's the first thing I say. The second thing I'd say is there there are three things in the last 10 days that have happened that remind me of why I do this work. And the first, I think, was a week ago Thursday, when I went to see the young people in the Jaguar Success Academy. And those bright young faces, aspiring, who asked me such thoughtful questions, reminds me of why we do this work. And then at the other end of the spectrum, we have like Dr. Williams and Colonel Davis, both of whom I got to observe this week. The quiet humility and dignity and the remarkable things that they've accomplished as Southern graduates also reminds us about the work that we do. And it it may not be obvious to you how seriously I take that. Now, let me say another thing, make another observation, because sometimes we think we're on opposite sides of the fence. Faculty, administration, board. are opposite sides of the fence, faculty, administration, board members. Professor Jill Murray performed a valuable service to the Southern University System and SUNO by pointing out a mistake in the board agenda. And that's a valuable contribution and it is appreciated, as President, I appreciate the willingness to stand up and have the courage to speak your mind. Similarly, the members of the Faculty Senate from the Baton Rouge Campus are appreciated for the passion and interest they have in the university and making it as strong a place as possible. Now, I'm going to announce something that I would like to see happen. But I would be remiss if I didn't sort of remind people, it's very easy in the heat of the moment to think about only where things are currently. But I'd like to make sure that we recognize Chancellor Ammons' efforts over the time he's been here. And that he has, my understanding, he's agreed to sort of step aside from the Executive Vice President role. But I want to remind you that he first went to Southern University, New Orleans, it was on a very short track to be, to lose its accreditation. And while I don't think he's the only one that had something to do, he led that effort that brought that school back from the brink. And just today, we heard about through his efforts and a lot of others, to bring a nursing building to the SUNO campus. We need to remember, as I'm reminded off, often, that sometimes you get upset with something, someone about something in particular on a given moment, or you want to move in a certain direction, but it's important to remember all of the contributions someone has made. When I arrived here a year ago, um, I had a lot to learn about the current status of the university and I saw these titles and those kinds of things. I wa- I want to acknowledge that one of the things I've learned over the course of this year is that we, we do need day-to-day oversight of what's happening on the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. Quite frankly, as Assistant President, it's very difficult to give the day-to-day attention to the broad range of, uh, activities on the campus that need attention. Uh, we can debate whether that title needs to be chancellor or something else, but I acknowledge the need for that. So, having said that, Chancellor Ammons has agreed to step down as the Executive Vice President role. And, um, another chancellor, um, here in Baton Rouge, Chancellor John Pierre has agreed to step forward and fill the role on an interim basis as Executive Vice President, which would be the Chief Academic Officer on this campus and would be responsible for, for the day-to-day oversight of the Baton Rouge campus. I would also ask, uh, the permission of the board to launch a nationwide search after discussion of just what that role and how it ought to be described, be launched this fall to make permanent, uh, to make a permanent appointment to that role. Uh, with that, I'll yield the floor and take questions if you're so inclined.
If you will, Mr. Chair. Why don't we go ahead and entertain, uh, a motion to receive and authorize the President to, uh, have a search on that position and, uh, get it passed and then we'll have discussion if that's okay with you.
Indeed, Mr. Chairman. As I appreciate the motion, we'd be then to authorize the President to do a search or we would authorize a search for the position of a permanent chancellor.
And receive Chancellor Pierre.
Southern University Baton Rouge. Is that clear?
Can you?
I believe we have some questions. Dr. Tarver?
I'm just trying to, I wanted to make sure I understood.
We're not hearing that grade over here.
Yeah.
Sam Williams, Gillian.
Okay. Yeah. On the motion?
Yeah, I'm, uh.
Go ahead.
I thought that was a very profound presentation, a very great statement that you've just made, and I think it lays a great foundation for where we need to be able to go in the future. I want to compliment you on that. In keeping with your suggestion and recommendation, the only thing I thought we needed some definition and you had suggested it is we need to define and perhaps not at this moment, uh, what the other positions want to be. So I thought that any mo- the motion should encompass two things. One was to accept your recommendation, uh, about putting, uh, Chancellor Pierre in that, uh, interim role. The second part of your recommendation was to, uh, you, I guess, to come back to the board with a, a definitive, uh, title, uh, decision about whether it's the Executive Vice President or it's going to be Chancellor. Or am I going too far with that?
Well, I think it's going to take a discussion with, because I think there, there's obviously board members that have opinions and views about what the appropriate title is and the governance groups that have opinions about what that title ought to be. And we ought to have those discussions and arrive at an agreement moving forward on exactly how it ought to be captioned. That's my.
Yeah. So that's why I suggested that you could come back to the board in August, Mr. Chair, with that recommendation to adopt, to start the search piece once we've had the discussion about that. So that was a motion that I wanted to author.
May I, may I, it appears as though there is some ambiguity in terms of before we talk about authorizing a, a search, that we would first clarify the positions that indeed we are searching.
Let me clear.
Okay?
Wisdom tells me we maybe need to call it a position and we can cite what the position is.
Right.
Uh, in August, uh, I'm going to defer it to council, uh, but I think that we call it a position. I want to get in the mindset, we're not playing with this, we're serious. And I don't want anything to impede him going out and saying we're searching for this position. Uh, that position is going to be communicated to us, but I don't want to call it anything right now, but go ahead, uh, to at least start the position. We're not advertising, we need to start the mechanism. So when he comes back next month, then we authorize him to actually do the search, uh, council.
That, that's correct. You do, you do have a vacancy in your position of EVP right now. So you, you can begin the formation of your search process and by next month, if it is determined that you're searching for a specific role of Chancellor, specific role of EVP or two people, that can be authorized at next month's meeting. But the process for searching to fill the vacancy can, can commence today or commence once y'all authorize it.
Explain to me, please.
Mrs. Gaines, Mrs. Gaines, I believe you had a question. It's over here.
Oh.
Mrs. Gaines, I believe you had a question.
Oh, yes, I do. Uh, are we authorizing a search for a position with no name? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's why I'm calling timeout.
That's what my question.
Let me, let me be clear.
Right.
We're authorizing him to begin the discussion of the search. He's not going to go out here and do a search. He's going to come back next month with what he'll, the position title is and he's going to bring that to us, then we're going to recommend hypothetically a search for a chancellor next month. Not this month, not right now, but we are telling him to begin the process of discussing how he's going to come back with the search. He needs a point in committee business. I don't want him to come back next month and say, okay, I'm going to form a committee. I want that to be formed and everything in place for next month. Whatever the title of the position is, it's the media will be formed and he's going to be issuing, uh, a notice of an open position. That's my right.
Mr. Farnell?
Is that, is that clear?
Yeah.
We're not naming the position, but next month he will.
For the.
Mr. Farnell?
Yeah. For the motion, the immediate emotion, uh, the immediate emotion, uh, based on information that the President has given us, is to, uh, have the EVP, Executive Vice President filled by Chancellor Pierre. I'd like to make a motion for that and we can, and if possible, we could separate the second motion with regards to the search if we.
And I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion in favor of Mr. Farnell's motion.
And then we'll do a separate.
Okay. Repeating again for clarification.
Okay. I'd like to make the mo- make the motion, all right? Based on the Presidential recommendation to have Chancellor Pierre to serve as the EVP for the SUBR campus here. That one motion, if I can get a second.
And that's on an interim basis.
That would be for the system though, I would be clear.
For the system. Correct my words, thank you.
That's on an interim basis.
On an interim, correction, on an interim basis.
Okay. Okay, there has been movement. It has been.
Who remembers Smith?
I'm sorry, you see that point?
Thank you. It is my opinion that at this point, we should focus on the Baton Rouge campus and the leadership so that our students and our campus will feel a bologna of our head, so that we can move forward with our fall registration, so that we can move forward letting our students know that we care, our faculty care, just so that they will know that they have our head. So at this point, I don't, I think that this is small comparing to what we should be focused on, and that is our Baton Rouge campus, Southern University, and our students. Thank you.
Then, as I understand it, maybe clarification here because as your motion, as I appeared you rendered it was to appoint Chancellor Pierre as the interim VP of the system. But is that the intended motion? Because I hear Mrs. Smith saying the immediacy of our situation is to have an interim chancellor for SUBR.
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
Okay.
And that's what the, that's what Chancellor Pierre would be.
That's what he said.
The interim chancellor.
Okay. Then may I re, may I restate the motion then, Mr. Farnell, or you would.
Yeah, if I'm Executive Vice, he would have the, the authority to run the Baton Rouge campus, let's say that. He's the Chief Academic Officer.
We can do it like that.
And he would be handling the day-to-day activities, because right here from Rome, of the Baton Rouge campus.
All right. Let me carry Mr. Farnell's motion then. He says that, his motion is that Chancellor Pierre would be appointed as the interim Vice Chancellor for Executive Affairs for the system, but with the understanding he would have immediate responsibility for SUBR, okay? Those in favor, I mean, most person, I've got a motion. I have a second. Those in favor, please let everyone know about saying a bye-bye. Posits Nate, hearing none, this motion is not carried. Thank you, and thank you, and congratulations, uh, Chancellor Pierre. Okay. Mr. Farnell?
I know that this motion has passed. I'd like to say, um, uh, compliment the, the President on his actions today with the understanding that we are growing this campus. If you know HBCU enrollment around and all HBCUs have grown and, um, it was 15 years ago under the leadership of, of Dr. Tarver that we, we made that change. At the time, the times were somewhat different, we were under some financial strains and the future was uncertain. But over the last seven to eight years, uh, our institution has continued to grow, the leadership has continued to grow at this university and, and as such, we've gotten to a point now to where, you know, we, we are addressing something that needs to be addressed. And so I commend my colleagues that sit on this committee and those of you that are on this board, again with this President, uh, President Shields and his action and his recommendation, uh, for us moving forward. So I do say that in support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farnell.
As well.
Comment, Mrs. Gaines?
Yes. Um, I appreciate, uh, the move we've made right here and I certainly believe that, uh, we have, we are in capable hands here. Um, but my thought is, in bringing all of this, why isn't there more clarity about where we are moving forward and what we're trying to establish here? The concern has been that we need attention to the Baton Rouge campus. That is our goal. Our, our, our collective agreement, it seems, that the President needs to be President and we need a Chancellor for Baton Rouge. And that's where I thought we were headed and the prelude to all of this could have been stated as such. If that's where we're headed, if we're not headed that way, then let's see where we are at. Now, I came on board because I was new to the idea of a President-Chancellor. Am I understanding, and I took, it took a minute to understand that the President, then you had the Vice President, Executive Vice President, and then you had the Chancellors that were the same. So here we are, appointing Chancellor Spitz to Executive Vice President, but with Chancellor duties. Am I understanding that correctly?
I appreciate the acceptance of the motion.
Chairman, uh, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman?
And look, there's no daylight between the way you feel and I feel, but what we have to work through, there are contractual obligations. He is the Chancellor right now by contract. We got to have some discussions about how we work that out. We also have to take in consideration Saks COC and how it's done, and I'd rather err on the side of cautiousness with him understanding that he's coming back to us with everything he needs to do a search and I'll be as candid as I could be, I think he should be Chancellor. Now, we're going to decide that next month and make sure we don't have any conflict with Saks, COC, make sure we have understanding with this contract, we have to do some amendments. We're, we're not going to be able to do that right now and I just want to make sure when we do it, it's done concisely and also in communication with the Faculty Senate, so they're not surprised what we're doing. And I want in this final form, as you suggested, at the next meeting, we couldn't do it right now because there's a whole lot of talk been going on to get to this point, but I agree with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have other comment?
Just want to comment, I kind of echo some of the things that's been stated. Uh, as a relatively new board member and, um, uh, seeing the process work and the structure throughout the system, uh, Dr. Shields, it's been a pleasure to meet and know you, but more so today, I want to, um, let you know personally how I appreciate your articulation of your comments today, your observation and your posturing. It's an example that should be, you know, just, uh, sent out throughout the system and each respective campus as well. So I think our move today is a reflection to the faculty and staff that we hear you and we are concerned mostly about the students and the, the campus, uh, here at SUBR, but it is also a model of the urgency to move at the respective campuses, SUNO, SUSLA, et cetera, all throughout. So I, I'm just glad to be a part of this team to work through some very difficult challenges together and I just wanted to give some, um, some, uh, comments of support for, for your comments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Douglas. Any other comments regarding this issue? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Informational item, uh, here is a discussion on filling keeper.
Did we carry the motion? I think we did. I think we did.
Uh, we're dealing with a discussion on filling key vacancies on each campus and I assume, Mr. President, that falls to you.
Well, I would defer to the Chancellors of the individual campuses. What I would tell you, uh, and I have a memo to the, um, board about, uh, some of these positions. We will have to address, uh, the departure in the Provost Office of an, of, of, an AVC. Uh, we do have an honors, uh, uh, college position, which we will be identifying an interim leader and, uh, within the week and then be doing a search to fill that position. Um, and we have other positions that are critical but not at that level down through the organization and we're just, we're going to grind away and fill those positions.
That may suffice. So need a further clarification on Item Six, Eight? If not, let's go on to, uh, Number Seven, Other Misses. Is there other business to be brought before the Committee? Yes.
Um, the, uh, authorization to, to begin the search was, was never done, is that, was that purposeful?
Begin the formation, it's not the search, it's just the formation of a search. So I really don't think it needs a motion, it's the intent of the board for him to come back with us. We're searching for a chancellor hypothetically, and we're gonna charge him with the committee that he would have suggested be formed to us at that time. It's just the will of the board, I don't know if you need a motion, I think it fills the pulse. But if you wanna do it, I'm, I'm saying no.
Well, it would appear the actual authorization would come, what, next month?
That's correct.
When you actually initiate the search, am I right, councilman?
Yes, that's correct.
Where the guy works. Why, that works for everybody, that's good. Let's see if this works, item number seven, other business.
Motion.
Uh, number eight, I got that for you, enjoyment. Motion? I've got a move by Mr. Fondal and second by Mr. Dudley, that we would consider ourselves a joint. We appreciate your tolerance, your personnel affairs committee is just a join, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate that, Mr. Dudley, you handled it well. It's now time to call the Southern University Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, to order a roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson, Chair, Dr. Ronnie Whitfield, Vice Chair, Attorney Jody Amadi, Ms. Zazel Dudley, Mr. Raymond Fondal Jr., Mrs. Maple Gaines, Mr. Sam Gilliam, Mr. Paul Matthews, Mrs. Christie Reeves, Attorney Des Moines Rutledge, Attorney Edwin Shorty, Mrs. Ann A. Smith, Dr. Leon R. Tarver II, Reverend Dr. Samuel Tolbert, Dr. Arlanda Williams, Mr. Jaron Young. We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. President, item number three is, uh, adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? I have a motion by board member, uh, Whitfield, properly second discussion, uh, hear none, all in favor, aye? Motion, motion carries. Item number, uh, four, public comments. Are there any public comments relative to the agenda as approved? Send no one approach the podium, no cards received. Uh, item number five are action items. A, approval of the minutes, B, approval of the committee recommendations, C, request approval for ratification, authorize, authorizations, uh, the Southern University Law Center, uh, request for approval of cooperative endeavor agreement. What's your pleasure?
Actions five, A, B, C, and D, second.
Approval in global has been moved by, uh, Dr. Tarver, properly seconded by, uh, board member Shorty, discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, especially in approval of committee recommendations. In looking at the packet and looking at the governance committee from last month, we changed, I believe, uh, the recommendation on, uh, search processes. It went from an action item to an informational item. The question I guess I'm asking is, are we going to follow up on that? Because if you looked at, since the Personnel Action Committee this time around, we have just a multitude of, uh, wave searches. Is that gonna be our going, uh, policy going forward or whatever have you? Or, Mr. Chairman, do you think we need to, we look at that?
Yeah, what we're doing, and I was expecting it, uh, this month, we're gonna have a pause, we've had a discussion. It's gonna be ironclad in the attendance to adopt it, uh, at the next meeting. So the board will have it and gave it input on it, input on it. I'd like to get it between now and maybe a couple of weeks before the board. Board member, uh, Smith.
Thank you. Uh, request a cooperative endeavor agreement with Southern University and College and the Foundation. Will you give me just a highlight on that, I'm not sure what's going on.
I don't see, uh, Mr. Harrell here, Mr. President?
It's D. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking for, um, D, item D, five D, just an explanation.
Corey? I'm Attorney Blash, my, sorry.
This is a CEA, um, that, uh, allowed, uh, a matching of $500,000 for the endowment, for the, for the endowment, um, professorships. And so, um, it was required that we do a CEA with the foundation who had the matching funds. And so a million dollars will, will be, uh, 500 from, that will have been identified from, from the foundation and 500,000 from Title III, um, to help with the, the endowment of professorships. And so that, that's all, it's just an agreement to, to confirm that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Encourage the staff to go back to putting little blurbs under these items where they, they do a little brief explanation. It may help, uh, smooth things along.
We'll, we'll, we'll get that done, it's an attachment in the agenda, but, uh, that's a good idea, I mean, it should have been in there. Uh, board member, uh, Tarver, Dr. Tarver.
No, I'm sorry, I was just.
Oh, I know what you're doing, I guess. You have the questions? Okay, the motion that made in global, all in favor, aye? Opposed, motion carries. Item six, resolutions? Yes, sir. Uh, who's back?
Tess, okay.
Let's not, uh, let's see if we can get board member Fondal in here.
That was an action item and you need one more member back on the floor.
We didn't rush you, did we? Okay, we're gonna go back over the motion, all in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you, uh, counselor. Item number six, resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First condolences, uh, to the family of Ms. Cheryl Coleman Bass. Ms. Cheryl Coleman Bass received her bachelor's of science degree in engineering from Louisiana Tech University and her master's of science degree in computer science from Southern University in A&amp;M College. Ms. Bass's parents and oldest daughter Carmen are alumnus of Southern University as well. She passed away on June 18th, 2023. To the family of Ms. Vera Skinner Henry, Ms. Henry graduated from Southern University with a bachelor of science in home economics and received the advanced degrees from Grambling State University and the University of Louisiana in Monroe. She and her late husband Louis instilled in their children the love of God and family, education, and community commitment. They were a Southern University Jaguar family. All six children and seven grandchildren graduated from Southern University. This was quite a legacy, she passed away on June 28th, 2023. Ms. Macaline Arlene Jenkins Joseph family. Ms. Jenkins Joseph, affectionately known as Mackie, was a 1964 graduate of Southern University Laboratory School and a 1968 graduate of Southern University in A&amp;M College with a bachelor's of science in business administration. Ms. Jenkins Joseph was also a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and a Sapphire Life member of the Southern University Alumni Federation, where she served as National Recording Secretary for 22 years under six different national presidents, including her husband Reggie. In 1999, Ms. Mackie, Ms. Jenkins Joseph was inducted into the SU Alumni Federation Hall of Fame. She passed away on July 13th, 2023. We have one accommodations, and that is to Colonel Paris D. Davis. Paris D. Davis was born May 13th, 1939 in Cleveland, Ohio. He went on to earn a degree in political science at Southern University in 1959. He enlisted into the United States Army as an officer, having successfully completed the ROTC program during his college years. He earned airborne and ranger qualifications in 1960 and special forces qualifications in 1962. He completed three tours of duty. His initial overseas tours included South Korea, South Vietnam, and Okinawa, Japan. It would be on June 18th, 1965, Colonel Davis and three of his special forces team led the Army of the Republic of Vietnam in a 19-hour battle at an attack on a Vietcom base that he would see his most heroic efforts. Those efforts would result in accounting for some of his 11 wounds received through his military career. He would risk his life in saving his fellow soldiers and defeat the enemy with artillery fire and hand-to-hand combat. Colonel Davis is the recipient of numerous medals and awards, including the Silver Star, the Purple Heart. Numerous attempts were made, resulting in his paperwork being lost each time. On, but on May, on March 3rd, 2023, he was finally recognized for his actions on June 18th, 1965 during the Vietnam War, when President Joseph Biden awarded him the Medal of Honor. This concludes our resolutions.
Thank you, Dr. Vital. Prepare the resolutions. What's your motion? Moved by board member Ann Smith, properly seconded by, uh, Dr. Whitfield. Discussion, hear none? All in favor, aye? Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, informational items A and D, presidential report, B, chancellor's reports. Mr. President?
Yes, uh, I, I hope each of the, uh, members of the board have had a chance to peruse the missive I, I sent out yesterday. I apologize, I, I, it was my intention to get that to you a week earlier, but I, in the process of trying to gussy it up and that kind of thing, it took back and forth some. I will try to be a little more, uh, on time next month when I deliver that to you. I, I've already mentioned it, but I will tell you that one of the things we're gonna do with Colonel, uh, Paris Davis is invite him to the Bayou Classic. And as part of that, I, I wanna make sure this board gets a chance to spend some time with this remarkable individual. I, I got to have a couple of meals with him and spend some time talking with him and given what he has been through, the humility and grace with which he's dealt, dealt with that, and, um, his willingness to continue contributing to society is just remarkable. And, and the, those two days probably had more of an impact on me, uh, than anything in the last, uh, uh, 10 years. Uh, and the beauty of it is, he shared that with the Jaguar Success Academy and numerous other, uh, folks around the campus. But he's remarkable and I, I really do hope he can make it to the Jaguar, I mean, to the, uh, victorious Ba- Bayou Classic that we'll have soon, and it's the 50th. Very briefly, the Jaguar Success Academy, um, it, to be candid, it's a few fewer students than I had shot for. We were hoping to be, have as many as 250. We have 170, um, I think they're having a great experience. The, the, uh, success of bridge programs is, is well documented. Um, and I, so I think viewing this as a pilot program that we find the funding to expand exponentially next year is really important. I think the board chair had a chance to interact with them. Uh, they're, they're a wonderful, engaging group. The one complaint I've heard is that there's a curfew, uh, that they've objected to. This also gives a chance for wraparound services throughout the first year and the opportunity to create a data set that, that shows us some things that are most effective about, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, bridge program. In all candor, we're, we're, we're all hands on deck. I, I will thank, um, Chief of Staff, what is your name? Vital and, uh, Acting Vice Chancellor, uh, Desiree Honore Thomas for their very active engagement in, in hammering away at our service, uh, providing staff to make this work. We're a little ahead of the curve, there's more students paid now. I think we've had a series of successful orientations, but the proof is gonna be in the pudding over the next, uh, couple of weeks. I don't wanna eat up a lot of time because I want you to hear from the chancellors. I do wanna prompt the board that, uh, we're, we're, we're through the good offices of Senator Fields. We have this opportunity to develop an economic development district. We're developing the documents, uh, this, this, uh, I wouldn't say mirrors, but aligns with a similar, um, district for LSU. But there's a different purpose to it, uh, approach to it, because it, you know, we're basically in an industrial area and they're in a more commercial area. But I will be reporting, uh, next month on the progress towards that process. It really is kind of significant to get it in place as quickly as possible because we're missing out on money we could be collecting for longer it takes us to get that done. In addition, I, I wanna alert the board that there's another piece of that legislation, um, that includes incremental, um, taxes on industrial that we don't control, that still passes through Baton Rouge. My understanding is that about a quarter of that money, when those projects start, will be coming to, uh, Southern, uh, to spend however we'd like. Early projections is that will be a, a million dollars spread over three years. Uh, how soon it might start coming will be dependent upon when, uh, uh, this industrial partner actually starts the work. Uh, I, I'll stop there to leave time for my, uh, colleagues unless there are any particular questions.
Yes, board member Fondal.
President Shields, uh, I do appreciate the, the, uh, the letter that you sent us uh, with regards to keeping up with what you're doing. I, I look forward to receiving, uh, more of those, they are very informative as to exactly what is kinda going on.
It just don't need to be every seven months, huh?
Yes.
I got it.
Yes, uh, I also wanna commend you on the effort with the students. I know we spoke earlier about moving toward ret- retaining more students, and I, I think, uh, this is an excellent way to, to, uh, work toward achieving that goal of the students that we need. We don't wanna be put in a position of having, you know, to make some drastic budget cuts. And if, as a system, we can continue to, to enhance retention, not just at this campus, but it's needed at all of our campuses. So I hope as a system, we can work to, to make something that's universal, that works across all boards here. So I just wanted to commend you on that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on the president's report? Chancellor Hammons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chancellor's report is, is in your packet, uh, and I'm not gonna go through, uh, each of those. I, I wanna make an announcement and make a request. The cybersecurity program at Southern University at New Orleans has been designated by Cisco as a networking academy. Uh, and I'm not, uh, versed well enough in networking to talk with you about the details of that. But as you know, Cisco was the pioneer of networking, uh, in the technology environment. But as an academy, our faculty will receive the coursework with no charge, uh, from Cisco. And the people in the New Orleans area who want to be certified as, uh, network, um, engineers, uh, would have the opportunity to go through that certification with SUNO. Uh, we will also, uh, have available to us internships with Cisco, uh, for our students. And all of the courses that we will, uh, teach, uh, in the program would be aligned with industry certifications. My request, Mr. Chair, is that, uh, you would allow our program leader in cybersecurity and representatives from Cisco, uh, to come and make a presentation so that you would better understand the significance of this designation, uh, for our cybersecurity program. Thank you.
Absolutely, that's a, I had the privilege, I know, uh, I think, uh, board member Smith and board member Gaines may have been on the tour. When we toured, uh, I hate to say it for lack of a better word, uh, How to Hack a Computer. He's teaching coursework over there that is very significant. And when you look at what's going on, uh, it's very, very impressive. I'm surprised they're learning to do what they should not be doing. But FBI and temporarily governmental agencies are looking for folks to break into computers so they could solve the problems this challenge was, so it was very, very impressive. I encourage you, when you get the opportunity, you were there, Zell? And Zell was there, uh, board member Dudley, take, take a chance to go look at what they're doing over. It's a, it's a interesting niche on a emerging offering of a degree. So thank you, uh, Chancellor Hammons.
By the way, uh, Mr. Chairman, just yesterday I spoke with representatives of the CIA, uh, who would be coming, uh, to visit the program and the lab as well.
Wonderful. Board Member Fandell.
Chancellor, um, I, I wanna thank you, uh, for your service as the Executive Vice President. I can remember, uh, years ago when you came in, we've had numerous discussions in your office, uh, but taken upon the challenge with your prior experience of going to the SUNO campus, you know, when we had challenges, to, to, to be in a position to go there to, uh, to, to work through those challenges. So I just wanna commend you on that and your service as our Executive Vice President for this system over that period of, of time also. So again, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. And I agree, uh, this guy stepped up in a very challenging time for us. And he's trying to bring sports back, and you tried to tell me that you don't believe sports matters. Uh, you tell that to LSU, you tell that to Alabama, you tell that to Jackson State. Sports matters. So we, we're all into the holistic approach of giving these students an experience they're gonna enjoy as they matriculate. Dr. Adams.
Uh, speaking of athletics, uh, we are now holding tryouts for our volleyball team, uh, which will begin competing, uh, in the fall. And we also have, we, we have totally about fifty new athletes. Uh, the other program is baseball, uh, which will start in the spring.
Okay, congratulations.
Point, point of information. Uh, Chancellor, if you would, uh, would you tell me the, the programs that you do have available? You have baseball, you have, uh, volleyball, basketball?
That's it right now. Men and women's basketball.
And you need, you need athletes for those, you need athletes for those particular sports, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
What about track? It was asked.
Well, that's a part of the next phase of the plan. You know, remember, we're doing this phased approach uh, so that we do it fiscally responsibly, you know?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Dr. Gant, Cecilia.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, President Shields, members of this honorable board. Last month, I mentioned, uh, we had our gentleman cooking classic. We was preparing for the gentleman cooking classic, and we held it on June twenty-fourth. I just wanted to report this morning that it was indeed a success. We, uh, had over twenty-four hundred participants in the community there. We featured one of our graduates here of Southern University, Mr. Damon Chapman. He's alumni and he served in the Human Jukebox, but he was one of our, uh, featured chefs. He's a owner of Orlando Seafood in Shreveport. I wanted to mention, we also had individuals who had at least fifty booths. We raised over one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And I say we, I wanna give credit where credit is due. Mr. Frank Williams and the, uh, Southern University Foundation, uh, raised over one hundred and ten dollars. And they also, uh, created four new scholarships in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars that will be awarded to, uh, Southern University students. And so, uh, we've had, that was a great success, and I wanna mention that. This summer, we have several, um, camps on our campus. Over two hundred students have participated in our camps, and we have our bridge programs going on as well through our trio programs. Next month, I will be able to, uh, report more of enrollments in those particular, uh, programs. And you have my report, uh, in your packet, and so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. I commend Dr. Mr. Williams, uh, certainly to come in interim along with Dr. Penning and do some phenomenal things in that short, short period. Uh, speaks volumes, and please extend, uh, my congratulations to him on a successful, uh, Men Who Cook. Is it Men Who Cook?
The Gentlemen's Cooking Classic. So yes, it's mostly men, but they invited women chefs to cook this year.
Yeah, Alexandria's man that's cooked. I'm sorry. Uh, Dr. McMeans, what he say?
I'll be brief because Chancellor Gant, uh, tapped me on the shoulder and said I had my time. She's learning very quickly.
Already bothered.
Um, you have my, the chancellor's report, uh, and I would draw your attention to the, uh, the two summer programs, the Bayou, annual Bayou program, which is, uh, uh, annual, uh, program. But Jagcation, which is our newest one, uh, asks you to draw your attention to that as well. And, uh, I will say about the Bayou program, we had twenty-four, uh, recent graduates from high school, and all one hundred will be freshmen in the fall. So we do have that pipeline established for getting those individuals. And, uh, I have just one announcement. Uh, the Southern University Ag Center, in conjunction with uh, University of Maryland Easton Shore, Kentucky State, and FAMU, uh, received ten million dollar award in connection with the Next Gen Grant. Uh, Southern University will be receiving two point two million of that. And, and I haven't had a chance to even tell the president because the secretary just announced it. And so we were given the green light. And so with that two point two million dollars, we will recruit students, give scholarships, experiential learning, not only within the country, but also, uh, internationally. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll also develop a pipeline, uh, to USDA. So we're excited. And this was Dr. Toledo was the one that provided leadership. And of course, Dr., uh, Renita Marshall in the College of Agriculture will, uh, put this into implementation. So thank you. That concludes my report.
That's why I call him Dr. McMeans, what he says, because he goes after the money he gets it. So congratulations, Dr. McMeans. Uh, Chancellor Pierre.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, um, I wanna thank, uh, the president for, uh, recommending me for this Executive Vice President's position. And I wanna thank the board for having the confidence in me. I could not do this, uh, unless I had good people behind me. And they're in the room, our vice chancellors, who, um, worked so very hard to carry out what we need to do for students each and every day. And, um, being an alum of Southern University and A and M College, I realize the challenges, uh, that are faced with the Baton Rouge campus. And the president has worked very hard to cure those challenges, and I look forward to working with him and everyone else to help cure those challenges because we are at a very pivotal point in the history of Southern University and A and M College. Uh, we have great opportunities. We have the ability to rise as high as anyone. And, um, I believe that we will do the work that's necessary to get things the way we want them to be and the way you want them to be. I, I wanna thank my colleagues, uh, chancellors and, and Sahu because, you know, each and every day, they rise with a purpose for making lives of students better. And I'm very, very fortunate, uh, to, uh, I saw Dr. Leardre Williams, the first time I ever got on a plane forty-five years ago. Dr. Williams was on that same plane. You could see I was nervous. And I had a, a little bucket of chicken that my mother prepared. Because, yes, a little small bucket of chicken, because she just didn't know when I would eat again. And it was a great thing she did it because that day, uh, things got bad with the plane, and I ended up flying for like twelve hours on alternative routes, and I was not hungry. But, but, um, today, today is a great day, uh, for all of us because we, um, do so much in this week, particularly, um, with Colonel Davis here. It reminded me of my days in ROTC. And, uh, I'm always thankful for the great Southern University.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chancellor, and we appreciate you taking on this very, very challenging responsibility. And you know what this board and the administration thinks about you. You have our full support. I'm gonna stay out of your way, empower you to do what you need to do. I'm looking for change. I'm looking for change. And, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna bring that change in the short term. It's gonna be sustainable. And, uh, I'm not gonna lean on you for anything and just do what you need to do. And just Jackson State and FAMU gang, give me four tickets to the suite. We'll be okay. But thank you so much. And Dr. DeVern, I think, was out here in the audience. Dr. Senate members, I am so, so impressed that you all are coming out here and voicing your opinions. Dr. DeVern and I shout. We praise each other, then fight again, but we never fall out. That's what it's about. We are, we're into rigorous, respectful debate. And this mic will always be open to the members of the faculty that wants to come here and have rigorous, respectful debate in the interest of this system. So thank you again, Dr. Senate, for being out here. And I wanna recognize a talented young lady who's here. And some of you may not know her, but I should just stand up. Where is, uh, uh, President Jackson, Tony Jackson? Give her a round of applause, uh, Suzanne. I've known Toni many, many years, very, very talented employee, and she is the president of the Staff Senate and does a very, very good job. We hear you. I've had a long conversation with the two folks that dealing with finance on this campus. Uh, Ms. Desiree Thomas and, uh, Mr. McClinton. We realize the deficiencies on the staff side. We know the staffing side of it, and we also know the pay side of it. And I promise you, they are working daily on it. So please let the faculty know, uh, the staff know that we hear them, and we're looking for solutions to the concerns that you all have. I promise you that. Uh, thank you, uh, Professor Pierre. Chancellor, uh, Provost, I should say, uh, what is your official title, Dr. Sahu?
Anything that you ask.
Okay, Dr. uh, Vice Chancellor, I was at, uh, Dr. Sahu, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, Chancellor, and, uh, honorable member of the Board of Supervisors for Southern University System and Southern University Campus here. I would love for you to, the president highlighted the Jaguar Success Academy. I would love for you to be part of the agenda someday and see the, what you are contributing to in terms of transforming life in a positive way. We are helping prepare these students from coming all over the country, all over Louisiana, uh, so that they can have productive careers and live noble lives. Um, it's, it's, it's a wonderful experience to go and visit orientation or the Jaguar Success Academy and feel energized, feel inspired to come and do your work. Um, you have the chancellor's report, um, with you. I'm not going to, I talked a little bit about the Jaguar Success Academy, Mr. President, spoke about it. But two items, uh, new that I want to share with you. One is that last night I got a note from the College of Nursing and Allied Health that I wanna share with you that our nursing passage rate for the first timers is ninety-six percent.
That's good.
And for the repeaters, for the repeaters, it is na- it is hundred percent with a total of ninety-six point four three percent. There are not many, there are not many institutions that can, you know, it, it will be the envy of many for achieving, um, this success. So through you, I would like to express my appreciation and recognition for the dean um, and for the faculty, and of course, for the hardworking students, uh, at this college and not faculty everywhere who have contributed to the success. Because these students, without taking biology and chemistry, would not be where they are. Faculty at Southern University Baton Rouge campus, that you have contributed to this success that today I have the honor to highlight. On a, the, Mr. Chairman, you said, sports matters. I wanna share with you something sports related that you all probably are not aware of because it's not in the radar. There is a game called cricket. And this game is played a lot part of the world, but is becoming popular in the United States. There are leagues, both in the North American League is becoming popular. So the campus of LSU and the SUBR went into a challenge and went into the first university cricket tournament or two, two game. And in this, on Sunday, July ninth, twenty twenty-three, LSU and SUBR played a cricket, limited over cricket match. SUBR team was captained by Mr. Punam Sai Vardhi. Uh, the Tigers won the toss and elected to bat. They scored hundred thirty-six runs with a loss of eight wickets. SUBR followed, and I have the joy to share that they scored hundred thirty-seven with six wickets and few overs left. Jaguars won the first dun- first match by four wickets.
That's good news.
And we have a trophy that if you authorize, I want it to be displayed the next board meeting with the team.
And what I want you to do is bring the team, load the president, okay?
It'll be an honor to do that. Many of the students, you know, we have.
I'm gonna do a little research because I don't even know what the outfit looks like. But I know they throw stuff with a middle, I think.
Oh, I, we're there. I will ask them. In fact, I have a picture that I'll send to you. They're all wearing blue, you know, the Columbia blue outfit with Jaguars emblem, emblem, you know, on their chest. Yes, sir. Thank you.
They kicked again.
Sir?
How many field goals did they kick?
There, there are no field goals. Maybe they can give a primer in most international venues.
Cricket one-on-one.
Yes, that we could have a board team meet with the faculty team, you know, we could do that.
Stick with the practice of medicine. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come before the board for the good of the system? You're the one responding to the business. If not, I'm gonna say the motion for number nine. You've heard the motion properly. Second, go and send them on. Thank you for coming.